Okay, we're missing a couple of councillors, but it is 7:00 PM. So we're gonna call the June 24th regular evening meeting of Township Council to order. Welcome, everybody. And the first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. And I'd like a motion then to adopt and receive the agenda items. Moved by councillor Ferguson, seconded by councillor Arnison. Any discussion? All in favour? That's approved. Show of hands, thank you. And then the adoption of the minutes. Now, this is from the regular council meeting of June the 10th, and our recommendation is to adopt the minutes. May I have a motion to councillor Ferguson again, and councillor Quinns this time? Were there any errors or missions or discussion on that? Councillor Richter, please push your button.
Yes. Page seven of the minutes of the regular evening refers to the mayor and council report, but it doesn't reference councils' reports. And in particular, I believe I had presented the book from Dr Zhang Bo to the township, and I would like to see that recorded in the minutes, please.
All right, we could certainly add that. If there's any objection from any members of council, if not, then by unanimous consent, we can amend the minutes to include the reference to the book. Any other discussion on the minutes? Then I call the question by show of hands. All in favour? Opposed? That's carried, thank you. And now we move on to presentations, of which we have none, but we do have a delegation.
Public hearing minutes? Did you do that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. B2, special council meeting for the purpose of public input. Thanks councillor Richter. So we'll have a motion to approve those minutes as well. Moved by councillor Richter and seconded by councillor Arnison. All right, so now we're on the public hearing minutes. Are there any errors or mission or points of interest from it that need to be brought up? Hearing, none, then we'll make a vote on that. All in favour with a show of hands? Opposed? And that's carried, thanks again. Now we're on to delegations. And take it away, Fort Langley Jazz and Arts Festival. Yeah. Thank you. So welcome, sir. You have a few minutes to make your presentation. Please start off by giving your name and neighbourhood wherein you live. Thank you.
My name is Dave Quinn. I live in Fort Langley, and I'm the artistic director for the Fort Langley Jazz and Arts Festival. So we are a nonprofit, volunteer-run society with a mandate to make live music and work and the work of local visual artists accessible to local residents, British Columbians, and visitors. We provide performance venues and opportunities for local musicians, visual artists, youth talent, and emerging artists. We contribute to the economic diversity of Fort Langley through presentation and quality of cultural experiences. We enhance Fort Langley's historic tradition with live music, art, and culture for people of all ages. How we got started? The vision of creating the festival came from a simple conversation between friends on the benefit of and the desire to bring a world-class jazz, music, and visual art together in one community festival. And just seven months, the dream to put on a summer jazz and arts festival in Fort Langley became a reality during the last weekend in July, for the last weekend of July in 2018, thanks to the support of many local community groups, businesses, sponsors, and volunteers. The first annual Fort Langley Jazz Festival, Jazz and Arts Festival was a huge success that brought amazing talent and thousands of residents and visitors to the streets of Fort Langley during the last weekend in July. Following up on the success and the feedback from the inaugural day and a half-long 2018 Fort Langley Jazz and Arts Festival, we've expanded the 2019 festival to three days, from Friday night, July 26th, to Sunday night, July 28th.
Karen?
Hi, everyone. I'm Karen Zukas. I'm the executive director of the Fort Langley Jazz and Arts Festival. I'm just gonna give you a really high-level overview of what we have to look forward to at this year's festival, and we're framing that in the form of 10 reasons to attend the 2019 Fort Langley Jazz and Arts Festival. Number one, more music, more art, and more for children to do this year. We have more than 25 free world-class local and world-class jazz and local acts on two alternating stages in front of the community hall. We have six pop-up performance stages throughout the community, three headliner ticketed events Friday, Saturday, and Sunday evening. We have a Jazz Fest after-party this year, which follows the All-Star Blues Show. We have a Kids' Family Zone, which is new this year. We're closing down Mary Street for that. And we have art activities and a number of jazz and art educational activities as well. Number two is, the Fort Langley Jazz and Arts Festival is a community festival, and it's put on with the community, for the community, and by the community. And we do this with over 100 volunteers who are part of the organisation and the implementation of the festival, and many, many local businesses, community groups, sponsors, and supporters. Our number three reason is, is there's something for every jazz fan. As I mentioned, two full days of free world-class jazz. We have 12 locations throughout the community. So this is really a community festival where we're having live jazz, music, and art throughout the entire community. So wherever you go, you're going to hear amazing live jazz music. And it's a wide range of music, too. It ranges from straight-ahead jazz, to R&B, to big band, to New Orleans, to funk and Latin jazz. So it really is very diverse. So a lot of people might say, "I don't like jazz," but really jazz is so diverse that there's probably something for everyone that you can enjoy. And in addition, this year, as I mentioned, we have Jazz Fest after-party, and that will be at seven local restaurants. So the party can continue after the Blues Show. Number four is, the festival has a mandate to support youth and emerging talent. The pop-up performance stages are intended for youth and emerging talent. That's an image of one of the young performers from last year. And we also, this year, launched a Rising Young Star Award. And the recipient of that award, his name is Julian Borkowski, he's a second-year jazz student at Capella University, he received the opportunity for his quartet to perform on the main stage of the festival. And he also gets to perform as a special guest with one of our bands, which is the VSO Jazz Ensemble Group, the Faculty Ensemble Group. And as well, we have a Jazz Education Workshop for Youth and Emerging Talent on Sunday afternoon with a stellar lineup of professional jazz musicians at Chief Seapass Theatre. And that's a nominal charge for youth and emerging musicians to attend that. We just got word the other day that we received a wonderful grant from the province of BC for that particular initiative. So we're really pleased about that. Number five is, we have an amazing lineup of award-winning acts, and some of the biggest names from the Vancouver jazz and blues music scene. You don't have to go to Vancouver. You don't have to go to the Vancouver Jazz Festival necessarily. Out in the Fraser Valley, we are gonna have an amazing lineup of jazz and blues music, and a lot of it is free, as I emphasize, on the two stages. So here we have, in the photograph here, we have Jody Proznik, who is a Juno-nominated bass, well-established, and the artistic director of the VSO Jazz Summer Camp Programme. And the other one is the Soljeniers, who are performing on Sunday evening at our gospel show. Number six is the headliner ticketed event. So we have three, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. On Friday, we're gonna kick off the festival with an All-Star Blues Show. It's going to be emceed by Jim Burns, who many of you may know as referred to as Vancouver's ambassador of blues. And we have the best of the best blues musicians coming for that. It's gonna be really special. It's inside the fort, natural amphitheatre, lit at night. It's gonna be, it's going to be magical. Six to 800 people, we anticipate, will be attending that All-Star Blues Show. On Saturday evening, we're having a tribute to Frank Sinatra with a big band swing dance inside the community hall on Saturday evening. And then closing the festival on Sunday night, we'll have the award-winning gospel trio, the Soljeniers, with the 50 voice, Marcus Mosley, Carol, at the Chief Seapass Theatre. Our opening festivities, once again, will feature a Mardi Gras strolling parade from the Fort Langley Farmers Market to the community hall for our opening ceremonies. And then on Sunday morning, we're delighted to have, in our kids' area, the Fort Langley Lions Club will be hosting a pancake breakfast while the Langley Ukulele Ensemble play. And they're gonna have some jazz tunes that they're gonna be playing. The Langley Ukulele Ensemble, just back from their trip to Hawaii, and they have told us they have some jazz music they're going to be adding to their repertoire for that performance. Number eight is, as I mentioned, family fun activities. The Kids' Family Zone is going to feature just a whole host of fun and interactive art and music activities for youth and children to take part in. We have everything from indigenous drum-making demonstrations by Kwantan First Nation artist Brandon Gabriel. We have entertainment. There's going to be, make a musical instrument. Longham Aquade is doing what's called an instrument petting zoo. So there'll be every instrument you can imagine, and children can come up and they actually get to play and try different musical instruments. So it's really gonna be an opportunity for youth and families and children to really enjoy art and music activities. Number nine is art, because we are a jazz and art festival. So the newly-formed Art Fort Langley Group is going to have, again, a self-guided art walk, like we did last year. And there's 13 different galleries and studios that people can take part in throughout the village. And plus, we've partnered this year with the Langley Arts Council, and they'll be exhibiting all that jazz exhibit in the community hall on Saturday. Then they'll take it back to their establishment for six weeks, where it will be on display for six weeks, following having it at our kickoff at our event on the Saturday. And number 10 is good vibes. That's another, the final is, is just the good vibes and live jazz wherever you go in the village during the festival. Really, from the farmers' market through the community hall, to the Heritage CN Station from Bedford Plaza, Bedford House, also known as Trinity House, to the fort, to many local restaurants, you're going to hear live world-class jazz throughout the weekend, the last weekend in July. And we're really excited about bringing that to the community. Last year, there was a really positive vibe, and now this is gonna be a whole weekend of that. And the whole community, we're really seeing the whole community getting involved with this festival, from the restaurants, to all the community groups and associations, to residents volunteering. So it really is wonderful to see that community vessel and that really community feel, and to be really starting to have Fort Langley known as the cultural hub for arts and music and culture. So we're really pleased to and delighted to be a part of that.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Your time is up. Unless there's any questions from council? I see councillor Arnison would like to ask you. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. It's not really a question. I just wanted to say congratulations on creating a three-day festival, and I'm personally really looking very much forward to participating in your event. Last year, I had the pleasure of being in the Mardi Gras, the little stroll that we had in the downtown, and I thought it was such a fun way to get the community together, and people get dressed up a bit and sort of warm us up for the event. And so you've added so many other different cultural experiences and art and things for kids. So I just wanna say congratulations and say how many people are looking forward to your event in Fort Langley. So, thank you.
Thanks councillor Arnison. And councillor Quinns has a question.
Yeah, thanks so much. I love the entrance, and I'm looking forward to the festival as well. I actually wanted to recommend councillor Arnison's dancing skills. So I hear you're having a swing dance. So yeah, I've had the opportunity to see councillor Arnison in that. So anyway, I just thought I'd mention that.
Well, we are, just to add, we are gonna have swing-
Dancing skills.
Dancing, we'll all be dancing, okay.
We are gonna have swing lessons just before the dance. Yeah, so anyone wants to come out, learn a few steps, maybe you can teach us a few.
But tickets are gonna sell out for that, aren't they?
They are, like last year.
Yeah, okay, all right. Councillor Ferguson?
Oh yeah, thank you for coming.
You can dance, too.
And I also observed councillor Arnison dancing, too. Good for you. Anyway, no, I did want, you're gonna be very, very, very busy. Are you, you're advertising it regional-wide as well?
We are. We have a digital advertising campaign where we are marking this throughout the province as well. And we also have BC Global TV as our media partner. So they're gonna be starting in early July, where they're gonna be promoting the festival on global TV. So that should have a really broad reach as well.
And I think I wanted to pass on a message to Mr Quinn. I used to play the clarinet, and I kinda quit because I wasn't squeaking the right way. But I wanted to ask you if you'll be playing the saxophone during the event.
I think pretty much the Razzmatazz Jazz Ensemble will be the only group that I play in. I might sit in with the blues band for the Blues Show for the wind-up All-Star jam session, because that's gonna be it.
Okay.
Very good. I always appreciate people with talent.
And we appreciate that you are not playing the clarinet any longer. And thank you again for your presentation. Would you like to give us something here? What is this?
Yes, on behalf of the festival, we have Jazz Bearers this year.
Oh, okay.
So this is made by Berga, or ordered by Berga, which is a teddy bear museum in Fort Langley. And it's the 2019 Fort Langley Jazz Festival. We'd like to present our appreciation for all of your support.
Appreciate it. Okay, I'll pass it around for everyone to, look, I'm sure Eric's dying to look at it. Okay.
Yes, volunteer, absolutely, on our website. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And we're gonna move on now to the next part of the agenda, and that is the next delegation, which is Jessica Yaniv is going to present to us with the delegation, and we're just gonna move the chair around so that it can accommodate the wheelchair.
Does this work?
The mic's very sensitive, so you can copy.
So, good evening, council. My name is Jessica Yaniv. I live in Walnut Grove. Unfortunately, I haven't been so well, so that's why I'm in a wheelchair, I have a brain tumor, so not fun. But today, I'm here, wasn't able to prepare a presentation, but I'm here to request that the township of Langley impose a ban on single-use plastics, single-use plastics, styrofoam, and also, one thing that really came to mind is also mass balloon release. So I've noticed, like with grad parties and such, you know, people are releasing balloons into the atmosphere, and where they're ending, they're ending up in the ocean. Marine life is getting onto this, and we just need to impose a ban. But when it comes to single-use plastics, Canada has imposed a ban, so why can we not just be the leader? I think we're ready. I really think we're ready at this point to, for example, start a ban on single-use plastics for, let's say, like January 2020. I think, I think we're ready. We've been ready for a long time now. You know, like I go and I see, like, plastic bags scattered everywhere these days, they don't dissolve, they end up, they just pollute the township, they pollute our atmosphere. You know, if we can do something, that'd be much appreciated, along with styrofoam products. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move into reports to council, and first is F1, which is a rezoning application number 100564, and a development variance permit application 100100. Moved by councillor Davis, and a second please, seconded by councillor Quinns. Any discussion? Councillor Richter?
Yes, thank you. I just had a question through you to staff. I did have the opportunity to attend the open house and found it very informative. One of the comments that did come up, while I was there anyway, was the frustration with regards to 224th Street North not being open, which encourages a lot of traffic along 47th Avenue. And I'm wondering, through Mr Acting Mayor to staff, if we could make as a part of this DP, the opening of 224th, or do we need to have a rezoning on that?
Mr Becken?
As part of, it is a rezoning, sorry.
Your worship, I think in theory it could be done, but I would suggest a separate process, independent of the actual application itself. I think we'll find that the 224th Street issue is a much different and larger issue than we would as this application. There's a lengthy history to the Murrayville Community Plan and the reasons why the closure occurred, and how it relates even north of this location up to Fraser Highway and through, where effectively the roads have been rerouted, some to the east and some to the west. So if it's the will of council to proceed with that initiative, I suggest it be done independently of the application.
And there's quite a bit of history to that, isn't there?
Yes, there is.
It's been discussed for many years.
And I also wanted to note that there are 11 significant trees on this property, and all are to be retained. So, thank you very much.
And councillor Arnison wishes to speak.
Yes, thank you. I noted the same thing about the trees, so that's very, very positive, and I think that's one of the reasons why the neighbours, and not to read into their comments too much, but, you know, there wasn't a loss of privacy and keeping the mature landscape, I think is very positive for this neighbourhood. I did have a question through Acting Mayor Long to perhaps Mr Seifi. I was wondering about the setbacks. So I know the side yard setbacks, because you're having two houses rather than one, the degree to which the setback between the homes, what measurement would that one be, please?
Mr Becken or Mr Seifi?
Mr Chair, is a question regarding side yard setbacks?
If, I'm just looking at the lot alignment, and there was a diagram there, but perhaps I didn't actually see a number attached, so I'm assuming that the side yard setback is not changed, but the degree to which the setback is different, obviously, from dividing the lot into two. So I thought maybe it was one and a half metres between those two new homes, and I'm wondering if that's correct.
Mr Chair, the setbacks will be subject to, subject of the new zone. The new zone proposed is R1D, and the side yard setback is 1.5 metres.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other councillor wishes to speak? All right, then we will attempt to call a vote here, F1. And this is for first and second reading. All right, and it passes with none opposed. Excellent, okay. So then we'll through the queue and move to the next one, which is F2, of course, and that is the official, again, for first and second reading, Official Community Plan Amendment and Rezoning Application number 100187. And several bylaws that go with it, bylaw 5486 and 5487. And that's been moved and seconded and discussion. Councillor Richter?
Yes, I note that the east part of the development property is going to be, I guess, put up for sale in order to help finance the development of the west part. But I'm wondering what kind of development is gonna go in there, especially as this whole piece is, as I understand it, outside the urban containment boundaries. So that's question number one. Question number two, I'm wondering about the water supply for this school. Is it coming from the aquifer, or will they be on metro water or city water?
Mr Seifi?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I can, I guess, draw council's attention to this slide with a map on page 4, F2, which is the land use designation map that provides the guidance, the framework for potential uses, as well as the committee plan. That's on the next page. Essentially, the property is going to remain, or at least the eastern portion of the property is not intended to have a change of designation or zoning, and will remain with the existing designation and the plan, which is small farm country estates. So all of the uses that the current zone permits will remain, which include rural, residential, as well as agriculture, actually, farming. And as far as the servicing requirements are concerned, the, one of the requirements is to extend municipal water to the property for the development.
Okay, and my last question concerns traffic. Is there going to be any need with daily traffic in and out from the school to have a light at the access on 44th Avenue and Fraser Highway?
Mr Seifi?
Thank you, Mr Chair. One is not anticipated at this point, and it will be subject of further analysis and review.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the next is councillor Davis.
Actually, a couple of answered questions was, is it gonna be a write-in and a write-out if Fraser Highway continues? I wasn't thinking about light, but then the other, this piece to the, it's actually to the west, I think, this small remnant piece, is that legal? Is there, is it big enough to be legal?
Can you put a house on it?
Well, Mr Chair, the part of the application requests council consideration of a variance to allow that eastern portion to retain the existing area despite the minimum size requirements of the zone, which is 4.8 acres. So this will be less than that.
It's west.
Yeah, he's referring to the little triangle on the west, the little orphaned lot there.
Oh, that's part of the parcel. It is not a separate, it is not a separate parcel.
In the report, they're gonna try to sell it to recoup, so is it-
No, that would be the eastern portion.
So I think the question, Mr Seifi, is what is happening with that little triangle that's on the west, that parcel there?
Yeah.
That remains as part of the hooked portion of the parcel, and there are no plans for any buildings there.
Okay, okay, so, but is it legal? Like, is it, well, I guess it would be, we-
It is not a separate parcel, councillor Davis. It is part of the same parcel.
Okay, thank you.
So it is legal, yes.
Thank you. And councillor Woodward?
I just had a couple of questions. Mr Seifi, can you, I'm sorry, a question to Mr Becken, maybe Mr Seifi can clarify, just what was, can I get a clarity again on the well versus municipal water for this application?
Mr Chair, I will draw council's attention to page 13, F2, the hard copy servicing section, that discusses the servicing requirements, which include- I thank councillor Woodward for correcting my previous statement. This is part of the service area that does not require extension of municipal water. So the existing water system, the adequacy of it will have to be proven, so no need for the extension of the municipal water system.
Yeah, I just wanted to just clarify that they're not in the zone currently, which restricts the addition of additional wells, but they would have, they're outside that zone, and they're able to put a well in to service the application until municipal water arrives to their lot line. Is that true?
That, that's correct.
Yeah, so I wanna clarify, so they are allowed to drill another well, so they're under the current system, and they've applied under that system. And so I think if we wanna revisit that, we might wanna, we wanna look at that separate from this application. But in the meantime, they've made the application under the existing rules. But what I did wanna clarify was that when municipal water does eventually reach this location, either on Fraser Highway or on their free street frontage, that there's some way to require them to connect to city water services. How would we put that in place?
Yes, and I noticed that it was in one of the documents saying that there was an intention to, but as councillor Woodward is pointing out, it doesn't seem to say that in the document. Mr Becken, can you help us with that?
Just thinking, without too much research, I think we could perhaps add the requirement by way of a covenant, that as long as we can identify what the triggering circumstances are, that connection to water would be required.
Yeah, 'cause I don't wanna hold it up for that. I mean, like I said, I think I'll say it again, they've applied under the current rules and the current structure, but if there can be some exit, it doesn't need to hold up first and second reading, they'll be planning a time between now and third to come up with some way to add that. So I'd like to leave that with staff at the moment. I also had a question about the parcel that's orphaned off to the east, whether the proponent intends to use that for any functional purpose, or simply it's going to be privately-owned green space with tree plantings. Do we know more details of what the intended use is for that?
I suspect Councilor Woodward was referring to the parcel, to the part of the parcel to the west.
Sorry, the parcel to the west, that's orphaned by the street, yeah.
That's correct, there are no intentions to do anything other than leave it as green space.
I wondered, I mean, I'm not going to, again, I'm not going to hold it up, I'm not going to make a motion to make it a requirement, but if the staff could ask the proponent whether they'd be willing to dedicate that to the municipality, so we could make some use of that potentially down the road, thank you.
Okay, and these can all come up, assuming it gets first and second reading and before third is given.
I'm just mentioning it now since it's time.
Yep, very good, and Councilor Richter, would you like to speak again?
Yeah, going back to the water, I'm very concerned about the water, because there's agriculture in the area, there's also a manufactured home park, and I'm pretty sure the school would probably be quite a water draw as well. I also wanted to go back to a comment that Mr. Seifi kind of made with regards to the lands to the east that are going to be put up for sale. What is the zoning size on that now, and what will it be when they're put up for sale? Will it be the same?
Mr. Chair, the zone for the eastern portion that will be subdivided, subject to council's approval, will not change, so the zoning will remain as RU1. However, the RU1 zoning requires a minimum lot size of 4.2 acres. That is why, as part of the application, there is a variance being requested for council to not require that parcel to have the minimum lot size of 4.2, but rather something less than that, which is, I think, in the region of 2.2 acres, as opposed to 4.2 acres. So subject to council's approval, the zoning will remain, that means that the uses will not change, the permitted uses, however, the parcel will be smaller than the typical 4.2 acre parcel, which is the minimum lot size allowed for RU1 zone.
Okay, so why then would we leave it with the RU1 zoning? Why wouldn't we change it to another zoning that's more in keeping with the 2.2 acres?
Oh.
That has not been a request of the applicant. It's typically a owner-driven process that determines the uses.
So the size of the remnant lot will then, at 2.2 acres, accommodate how many new households in there?
It's just one household, well, actually RU1, two, two dwelling units, no more than two dwelling units are permitted in the RU1 zone.
Okay, but it's, but will it only be one lot with two units, or will it be two lots with two units?
One lot with two units, subject to provincial regulations providing for stratification.
Okay, well, in that case, I think we should be changing the zoning there, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, Acting Mayor. I had a question, I guess, and looking for clarification, so, and I think it's further to Councilor Woodward's point regarding the way that we can make sure that if we put this forward and the applicant is able to go ahead, that at some point we have certainty that it is actually going to hook up to water supplies, so, sorry? My understanding is that part of this application is that a corridor study for the Fraser Highway in this area will be undertaken, so my thought is perhaps that we could tie the water that should be provided to this area in order to make certain that it's developed in a comprehensive and a responsible manner, that could be the opportunity to tie the water in there. I had some misgivings myself, I must admit, about the water supply there, however, I think that this is just a temporary situation, but I think it obviously would be preferable if we had a termination time in which we knew that the new development could actually be hooked up to metro water there.
And thank you, so Mr. Becken, I'm a little confused as to why the letter that was written to the township on May 28th does clearly state that there is an intention to hook up to municipal water sources once they're extended, but yet it's not in the bylaw. So I understand, you know, Councilor Woodward has already made mention of that, and we can certainly add it, but it could be added now as well, I suppose, as a condition.
It could be added now as an amendment, it could be added any time prior to giving, granting of third reading. I think the only differentiation is it is a use that's accepted in most areas without that requirement, lots are being developed or occurring, and because of the area, it's exempt by previous township bylaw, so it's something that's within council's discretion, but not something that happens automatically.
Yeah, I understand that, but of course, it's a school, which is a little bit different than most applications we get. Councilor Woodward.
I'll just say, I think, I didn't move to add it as a requirement, because I don't want to come up with the solution to get to the objective, so I think this gives a couple of council meetings for staff to talk to the proponent, come up with some idea whether that's a problem for them, or some other considerations maybe we're not aware of, come back and look at that at third reading in terms of the mechanism to achieve the goal, which is that one water service is there that they will connect.
Okay, fair enough, any more discussion? Then we can call the vote on F2. And it passes with Councilor Richter opposed. All right, and we'll move now on to the next item, which is F3, of course, and that is the Heritage Revitalization Agreement for the Perry Evans Residence, bylaw number 5227. And perhaps I could have a mover for that, please. Moved by Councilor Arneson, seconded by Councilor Ferguson, discussion. So this is the heritage building that's being moved to the corner. No discussion? Oh, there is, Councilor Richter, please go ahead.
Yeah, I actually had a question with regards to the third last paragraph on page two, this bylaw is being prepared for council's consideration in conjunction with the review of two DP applications for the overall development, which are expected to be brought forward for consideration of third and final reading of the subject bylaw. I guess I'm a little confused about the wording of that, I'm just wanting a clarification of what it means, like, what two DPs?
So I understand this is a condition of rezoning. Mr. Seifi, perhaps you'd be better off to answer the question.
That's correct, Mr. Chair. The larger site is subject of a rezoning and development permit application process, one of the conditions of the rezoning application that council has already given three readings to, and the proponent is, has been in the process of addressing the prerequisites of, is to actually relocate the existing heritage building based on heritage revitalization bylaw to be adopted by council, so they're actually fulfilling the requirements of the development application proceeding with this HRA.
One of the steps along the way.
That's correct.
Well, if that's the case, I'm wondering as well, how come if we gave third reading in 2016, here we are in 2019, and this required bylaw is just in front of us now? I'm just wondering how come there's been quite a delay in it, and does this mean we need to go back and redo public hearing for the other one?
Well, that's a fair comment, but I imagine there's circumstances by which it's coming forward now. I often wondered it myself, because the report came to the Heritage Committee quite a number of years ago, but I guess it's just the timing.
Why did it take so long?
Do you have an answer for that, Mr. Seifi?
Yes, I understand there have been some property exchanges, ownership changes, as well as partnership disputes that may have resulted in the delay.
Okay, Councilor Richter?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and there was another speaker, but they're all clear now, all right. Any more discussion on this, then we should call the vote on this one, which is F3. And it passes with no objections. And F4 is a rezoning application number 100488, and a development permit application 100904 in Carvel. So we would like a motion on that, please. Moved by Councilor Whitmarsh, and seconded by Councilor Davis. And discussion. My apologies, there you go, okay, Councilor Richter.
Yes, I'd like to move deletion of item 13 on page three, that this proceed to, I guess, we're taking it through first and second, but I do not understand why we are authorizing proceeding with clearing and excavation of the subject site in advance of final reading and issuance of development permit number 100904. What I really don't understand is that the two lots that this particular development is going to appear on, one of them is zoned to have a conservation area because of, I guess because of some sort of a tributary or water thing through the air, yet the report clearly shows on page 13 that there are 145 significant trees, and none are proposed for retention. So this just seems to me very, very odd, and that's why I'd like to move that, we remove that item number 13 on page three as part of this application moving forward.
Now, are you perfectly able to make that motion, or would you like staff to first explain why it's in there, or how would you like to proceed?
Well, they can explain why, I'm still making the motion.
All right, well, let's give it, let's give a try and explain why we're giving the pre-clearance on the excavation work. Mr. Becken, can you have an answer for us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are three, I guess, different reasons, all to do with environment. One is to try and eliminate any potential erosion, sedimentation issues with the clearing operation, because of the fact that the proponent would like to take advantage of the summer drier season. The second part is the nesting season with respect to, I guess, provincial regulations and requirements to not clear outside of the nesting season, or within the nesting season, I should say. And the third part is fisheries, I don't know if there are any specific impacts to fisheries, but I would suggest that that is part of the consideration by the applicant as well.
Okay, and to be clear then, this is only if it were to receive third reading, right?
That's correct.
I think it is, well, let's be clear on that, because we're giving it first and second now, and it would be on the, on giving it third reading that this permission would be given, it wouldn't be happening before, can we get a confirmation of that?
I can confirm, the intent is not to proceed with anything until such time as council has granted third reading, if in fact council chooses to do so.
Okay, so that's, that's clear with council, Councilor Richter?
Yeah, well, I'm still not very happy with this application, and if we go on page 15, it clearly says the proposed development is located in an area designated Office Mixed Use 1 and Conservation Area, but what's happening to the conservation area? It's being clear cut and excavated, why? I mean, how do they get away with clear cutting a conservation area?
Well, I wouldn't...
I mean, this just doesn't make sense to me, and particularly when the conservation area includes a Class A red-coated tributary for Latimer Creek, and that's on page 14.
Okay, but I can't possibly imagine that we're going to allow that to occur in a conservation area, but please explain, Mr. Seifi, if you could.
Mr. Chair, the Arborist Report explains the rationale behind the inability of the applicant to retain any trees, and that is because of the topography of the site, because of the nature and quality of the trees, as well as the need for a foundation and parcade structure that preclude collectively the possibility of retention of any of the trees.
Okay, and I see that, and that's on page 13, but again, what I don't understand is, of course, trees can't be retained when you're going to put in underground parking, but this application has both surface parking and underground parking, why wouldn't they just put underground parking in and save the trees on the surface in a conservation area with a red-coated stream? So I'm very, very concerned by this application, and I do want to move that we delete number 13, and I also want to move that we defer this rezoning for a presentation from staff about the conservation requirements on this property, as well as an explanation of the SPEA requirements. I don't understand how we can arbitrarily get rid of those SPEA, or that we can get rid of conservation and setbacks and everything else with a red-coated stream.
Okay, I'm going to ask if you could hold that, so we can go through the speakers' list before you make that motion, so Councilor Woodward is next.
Yeah, so just some of the questions and maybe the motions in the direction this is going, I just wondered, Mr. Becken, if you can clarify through staff, maybe, the clear cutting that's occurring in the underground construction is not occurring in the SPEA area, or is it occurring in the SPEA area?
Councilor Woodward has referred to clear cutting. What I suggest is, or what I'm saying, staff, based on the submission of the applicant and their consultants, is that none of the trees on the site are capable of being retained based on the design. That does not mean clear cutting of the SPEA area, it just means that there are likely, without knowing the full details of the site layout, there are likely no significant trees within the area, within the SPEA area, that are to be retained or capable of being retained. It doesn't mean that the area is going to be disturbed, it just means that none of the trees, there are either no trees within that area, or none of them are able to withstand the construction activity close by, and based on the submission of the Arborist cannot be retained.
Yeah, so I think that's an important distinction, I mean, I chose the word clear cut maybe a bit, because it does say 145 significant trees exist on the site, none proposed for retention, so I'll choose my words more carefully, I need a word to just go from 145 to zero that isn't clear cut. But I do recognize the distinction that the SPEA area may not be disturbed, and we don't get the Arborist reports, and I'm not sure it's our job to go and get to that level of detail on every application. But I am also a little confused as well, I'm going to go over to the item 13, where we were intending to pre-authorize excavation, and I'm trying to clarify some of the comments earlier, because it says in advance of final reading, which I think you said third, Mr. Seifi, and I just want to clarify it, because final reading, I mean, that could take a significant amount of time, and then they're not in the summer months, so again, I'm trying to clarify what the intent is here, maybe we can get to the intent of what they're trying to achieve, while maybe allowing public input to occur prior to authorizing anything.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, with your permission, the intent is post-third reading, but prior to final reading, so the applicant wishes to, because of the fact that typically it would take the most amount of time that is required for an application to be approved to obtain final approval is between third and final reading, that typically could take anything between six months to 18 months. As such, the applicant has requested council's consideration to be allowed to proceed with site preparation, including the removal of trees, between third reading and final reading, that would be post-public hearing.
That's great, so that clarifies the wording then, so I think that there's some reasonableness to that, that the excavation can occur during the summer months, but really don't like the way it feels to be authorizing it prior to completion of the public hearing, so if it's possible, removing, I think this has already been moved, that we could divide, potentially divide one and two, and then vote separately, or defer number three to reconsider it after the conclusion of the public hearing, that would be something that I'd like to, I don't really, don't feel very comfortable considering that at first and second, I would like public hearing to complete first, thanks.
All right. Yeah, well, let's hear the rest of the speakers, and we can think about that.
Chair, I think there's one point we could probably elaborate on, that was the suggestion of the red-coated stream and the implications, we never really did address that, can we circle back to that for the setback issue?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, the subdivision and development servicing bylaw provides for the SPEAs, which is, I think, Schedule I, Schedule I of the bylaw, which sets out the specifications and the requirements for SPEA, which is the Streamside Protection Enhancement Area. It provides for what is called the flex provisions, which is, as long as the overall setback area for the entire corridor is no less than whatever the bylaw requires. If it's, for example, if it's 30-meter setback for a length of 100 meters, it cannot be any less than 3,000 square meters. However, with that area provision requirement, minimum area requirement, some areas could be reduced to less than 30 meters, as long as the overall area is not reduced any less than the area, if I'm making myself clear. So there are provisions to reduce it from 30-meter setback to something below 30-meter setback, say to 20-meter setback, as long as in some other areas along the same corridor... corridor, the setback area is widened such that you end up with the overall net no reduction in the, in the area. That's called the flex provision.
Okay. That's an answer. That was, that was a question, the red-coated stream, but now we're going back to the other, oh, I guess it's to Council Arneson now for her question, correct?
We're entertaining questions at the moment, or are we speaking to these other conditions?
We're, we're still speaking to the main motion, which has not been amended yet.
Okay. Thank you. Just, I had a question through Mr. Mayor to staff. It has specifically to do with a riparian area that's identified at the bottom of page thirteen. So, I understand that the SPEA has a variation so you can narrow and also expand an area to create a minimum. I'm just wondering about the decision to put a pathway, which is a trail basically, it says in the outer twenty feet of the riparian area, and I'm wondering if this is something that's been recommended that would be appropriate to do in the riparian area by a qualified professional?
Mr. Seifi.
Yes, indeed, Mr. Chair. The precedent has already been established elsewhere in the township where we have actually encouraged the location of trails and recreational trails within a setback area as long as they are obviously done and designed and constructed with respect to the environment, obviously, and, and not intrude in the, from the top of bank, or the, below the top of bank, I should say, and maintain the natural setting, and it's kind of meandering to preserve the trees and vegetation. So, that's, that's always been something that's, that's been encouraged.
Thank you for that answer, and just one further comment, so, about the trees. So, one hundred and forty-five significant trees currently exist there with only ninety-nine replacement trees in post-development. So, that's just my observation about the loss of trees on the property.
Okay. Thank you. Council Ferguson?
Yeah. There's been a lot of questions asked. I mean, there is the, if I may, through the chair to staff, the conservation and environmental area. I'm not sure, number one, what size of that one. That's my first question. A second one, within that area, when you're assembling and having an arboretum report, usually the arboretum report do not include trees within an environmental or sensitive area. Is that the case in this particular project? If I may, again, because I know it's been asked once or twice.
I guess, starting with the first question, Your Worship, the entire area is approximately, the entire area that is going to be subject of the setback is approximately one-third of the overall, overall size of the two parcels put together. And as far as the, the number of trees or maybe potential existing significant trees that may be located within the stream site area, I don't, I don't have the answer to that question, I'm afraid.
All right. So, now we're back to the issue of the concern about pre-authorizing the clearing. Now, I think it's been made, very clear to me at least, and maybe we can talk about it some more, that there's nothing would occur until third reading is given. First and second reading simply takes it to public hearing, and I believe the report is saying that before final reading, assuming it gets third reading, that this excavation works would, would, would carry on. That's the way I see it. Now, is council okay with that, or do you want, do you want to find some other way of strengthening that? Maybe we can change the wording. And it was you that brought it up, Council Woodward, so I'm going to ask you to speak to it right now. Well, actually, both of you, you and Council Richter, did. You want to go, Council Richter, go first? Okay. Please, Council Richter.
Okay. I think that this whole application should be deferred to a subsequent meeting so that staff can give us a very detailed presentation on how exactly this red-coated tributary is going to be affected, how many trees are going to be retained where the red-coated tributary is located. Now, if council is not willing to defer that, then I wish to put forward two amendments, well, actually, three amendments. The first one would be to retain all trees around the red-coated tributary for fifty-meter setback. The second one would be to delete the excavating and clear cutting thing, which is on our agenda here on page eight. It appears in the report as number thirteen, to delete that. And the third one I'd like to add is the green roofs be mandatory on this building in recognition of the number of trees that are being taken out by it.
Okay. So, you have a list of amendments. Now, this can be addressed at the public hearing. It could be explained by the proponent.
Late, that's what I'm saying. When we see an application come in front of us that just doesn't seem right, we shouldn't be sending it through to public hearing. We should make sure that we think it's right before it goes to public hearing.
Okay. I guess I'm going to need you to make a distinct motion then, because I don't have a problem from the explanation that's been given that there isn't going to be any damage done to these areas.
Okay. Then I would make a deferral motion of this rezoning application to the next meeting of council.
For staff presentation.
For a staff presentation on the detailed environmental and conservation aspects of this application.
Okay. So, we're going to go to open an amendment, and that's been made, moved by Council Richter. We need a second, and I think I saw a nod over here. So, Council Arneson is seconding the amendment, which is to defer this for staff presentation. So, on the amendment, any speakers? None? Then we'll call the vote on amendment. Is it working? I don't know. It won't let me do it. Label vote. Okay. How would I label this, please?
It would be F four.
F four. Okay. There we go. Okay. It is defeated on a tie because we have Council Whitmarsh, Council Long, and Woodward So, that's defeated then. So, we're back to the main motion, which is to send it to first and second, to give it first and second reading and send it to public hearing.
Mr. Chair, may I just try and provide some more clarification to what I was saying earlier? Maybe I wasn't doing a good job articulating. The streamside setback area is not being touched with the exception of constructing a trail. So, the, the number of trees, the number of significant trees that you see in the staff report, one hundred and forty-five, based on the arboretum report, is, are only those trees outside of the setback area. What I was saying was, I'm not aware of whether any significant trees exist in the other area or not, but the fact remains that that area will not be disturbed with the exception of constructing a trail, and the trail will be constructed in a manner that will try and minimize the number of trees that have to be touched. In fact, it will, it will not remove any trees. It will not result in removing of any trees.
Thank you, Mr. Seifi. Council Woodward.
Yeah. So, I actually support the intent of the previous amendments, but I'm going to try to structure it in a different way that I think can, can, can get us to the same spot. So, the trouble is, I'd like to move some version of division between the first two sections and the pre-authorization of excavation. And then if we can send this to public hearing for the July eighth meeting, but then have a presentation in the afternoon July eighth meeting, we're not slowing them down by one council meeting, potentially still get to third before the summer break. I don't generally have a big problem with proceeding with excavation in the summer prior to final if we give approval to the application. This says here that we're going to be approving this. If we approve it, well, I just don't see any need to do that until we've completed the public input process. So, Mr. Chair, is there some way for me to get there where I can defer the third part to the July eighth meeting, grant first and second reading to the application, schedule the public hearing, but then have the presentation requested by Council Richter scheduled for the afternoon meeting of July eighth, which would be given to us prior to consideration of the public hearing and closure of submissions? Is there some way to get us there?
Okay. The way I see that perhaps is on page seven.
Everybody what they want.
Yeah. Well, on page seven, where it says that council authorized staff to schedule the hearing, I guess we draw a line there and defer the rest of the bylaw to July eighth. Mr. Backen?
That's one option, Your Worship. The other option would be simply to add language to that clause that makes it clear, where it says that in advance of final, that it says after a third reading, but in advance, but in advance of final. That way, it's protected and we have a suite of bylaws.
If that's satisfied. I thought I heard some saying they wanted to hear what the public hearing had to say first.
Yeah. You think, for me, I think that makes sense. That's, that clarifies a little bit more, but I think then I would be looking, if there's something that comes up in the public hearings, I'd be looking for reconsideration now, trying to undo previous council direction. What's the harm in deferring it for?
Okay. Well, I appreciate what you're saying, no, but I'm, that we can amend at third reading any way we like, so there's no needing to rescind or anything, or go back. Certainly after, that's the whole idea of the public hearing, is that whatever amendments need to be made, or adjustments, or conditions added, or taken away, can all happen quite freely at third reading. So, this doesn't encumber anything.
The challenge is when we split the bylaws, some go forth, some do not go forth. The question is, then, do we have to take the second part back for first and second reading then and bring it back at a later date?
I think you'd have to.
Yeah. So, the short answer would be then, as was referenced, the change could be made. However, it could also be reversed or altered further after hearing from the public.
Okay. And then can we get that present, so you need a separate motion to schedule, to request a presentation specific to this application for the afternoon meeting prior to the public hearing?
I would do that differently because we've actually had a motion about deferring the matter for a presentation, so it may take a bit of wordsmithing to actually recognize that the motion's been voted upon once and been unsuccessful, so we may have to couch it in different ways.
I'm not looking to defer it for a presentation. I'm looking to, to give it granted first and second reading and then have a presentation, which is not deferring it, is to make sure that we receive it, and people that are interested, maybe they could watch it online or receive that information prior to the public hearing, and they would know that that presentation is happening, or we maybe get some additional information on the application. But then we receive it prior to closing the public hearing, and there's still a chance for the proponent to achieve third reading prior to the summer break.
Exactly. So, for purposes of clarity, so it comes through nice and crisp, I would actually do them as two separate motions. I think then it would be easier to manage and indicate what the direction is.
Okay. So, we could leave the motion moved as it is with the understanding that, that really not very comfortable with, I mean, this wasn't, I don't know why this is necessary here tonight versus that third reading. I don't know why it's here for first and second reading. How does that, how does that matter if we can undo it and doesn't mean anything until third reading? Why is it here at all then?
Well, I think it's critical to the application, that's why. It's critical, it's the timing for them. But may I try this, okay? Can we not move, it's already been moved, can we not add an amendment by Council Woodward that the presentation be held on the afternoon of the public hearing on it?
Okay. So, I'll move that, I'll move that amendment to have a more detailed presentation regarding the SPEA guidelines, possibility of green roofs as compensation for trees, and any other items council may wish to add, I'd move that amendment for a presentation.
Okay.
And parking and office.
And parking, and all kinds of things. So, we'll have a second for that. Council Davis. Okay. So, now we're in amendment.
Mr. Chair, just so we have the context of the amendment, we have to slow it down. So, we have SPEA guidelines, green roofs, parking. Was there anything else as part of the amendment that's being put on the floor?
Presentation content?
Correct. That's the content of the presentation, but anything else the presentation's to address specifically?
And any other matters that come up? All right. Any discussion on the amendment? Are we all clear what it is?
First mover and second please.
It was moved by Council Woodward and seconded by Council Davis.
Thank you.
Now, I don't know if I've got the right numbers, buttons pushed here. So, this is close amendment one for whatever that means, open amendment one, because that's your amendment two, I suppose. And discussions on the amendment now, right? Council Richter?
Yeah. The green roofs, you're putting this into the staff presentation?
Yes.
Because we do have the, what is it, the Energy Conservation Greenhouse Gas Reduction Development. We, you know, the destruction of all these trees when we're trying to reduce greenhouse gases means there has to be something to take the place of those trees. So, I will be moving an amendment to add green roofs to both of these buildings at third reading. So, if staff will talk about that in the presentation next week, I'll be happy, or next meeting, I'd be happy to hear about that.
You've got that. Okay. Council Whitmarsh, on amendment, please.
Yeah. For clarification, really, this application is going forward as, as written here. The only addition is to ask for a presentation from staff to outline the environmental management of this, for this application. It's not really suggesting new things, it's just really providing clarification to council on what environmental steps are being taken in this, for this application. Is that, is that a correct, Davis? Okay. So, there's no delay, it's just simply a presentation on what we're currently doing?
That's right.
Okay.
Okay. Council Richter again.
Yes. And I also want to add it in protection of the red-coated tributary as part of that presentation.
Right. Anything else to be added? We can bring up other items at the presentation too, I'm sure, but I mean, that's been added as well? Anything else?
Correct. But we've just added it, so again, it has to be by unanimous consent. We just talked about it.
Oh, is it? Okay. Is there any objection to adding that? Seeing none, then that is added by unanimous consent. Any more discussion on the amendment? Then I will call the vote on the amendment, which is F, just a second, I've got to push a button here, three, I think. And that passes with nobody objecting. Excellent. So, now we're back to the main motion, which has been amended in that it's, the motion has been moved, that it is on the agenda with the addition of a presentation from staff on the afternoon of the, I guess, the July eighth, right? Any discussion further on that motion now, then? Seeing none, I'm going to call the, call the vote on that. And it passes with only Council Richter opposed, or with Council Richter opposed. Thank you. Well, we're going through that. And now we're going to move to, that's a lot of pages on that one, isn't it? F five, which is the Official Community Plan Amendment, rezoning application one zero zero four five zero, and a development permit application numbers one zero zero eight two five, and one zero one zero five seven. May I have a mover for that, please? Council Ferguson and Council Whitmarsh is seconding. Discussion. Again, this is first and second reading. Council Richter?
Okay. I note in page sixteen of the report that two hundred and fifty-six significant trees exist on this property, but a hundred and fifty-five of them are in the future schoolyard. Isn't that convenient, which means they'll have to get taken down so the school can be built? I'm wondering if, whether, whether or not we can move the school location in order to retain more trees. That's my first question.
Okay. That's a simple question. He says with a grin.
Mr. Chair, the school requirements are, as council may be aware, five acres in size, and in order for us to optimize the land adjacent to a park, a neighborhood level park, such that the playground can be, can be shared, and as such, based on the, the overall needs of the neighborhood and the road network requirements and the connectivity, the areas that have been identified as future school and park site in consultation with the school district, over the past number of months are identified, as you can see on the screen here, with the, the school being the easterly portion shown in blue, and the neighborhood park being the, the portion to the, to the west, shown in green. And going back to the aerial plan that shows this site coverage, it looks like equally, I guess, having both, both portions, if you will, both portions of the site having equal coverage of trees. So, I would suspect locating it elsewhere would also result in, in similar retention potential.
Well, except that when you look at the numbers, so, there's one hundred and fifty-five trees in the future schoolyard, which basically, as I said earlier, are gone. The one hundred and one trees outside the schoolyard will not be retained because they're, quote, "in unsuitable condition." Okay. I also have a concern on page three with the relocation and reconstruction of streams. We've had, we've learned how that has not exactly worked well in other locations, for example, most recently, some of the Gloucester applications that have come through. So, and again, this business with the SPEAs. So, I would like to have a presentation from staff, I'd like to defer this application for a presentation from staff on these items. We've got to start protecting more of the natural environment, and relocating and reconstructing streams as well, as well as taking down every available tree just doesn't cut it anymore. So, I'd move deferral for a staff presentation on this at the next meeting.
Okay. We do have a motion, although we could look at, could we not do the same thing as we did with the last one with this one? And that's another consideration. If we're having a presentation on the afternoon of the eighth on the other item... on the other item, we could add this to it?
Okay, so you would say let?
Well, let's see if there's any other comments, but that would be another option, certainly it's up to you. So carry on Counsel Ferguson, could you add to that?
I just wanted to know, the last time we moved first and second subject to a presentation, whether that was the same thing that Counsel Victor was thinking of?
That's what I'm proposing, and I'm getting the nod that we could do the same thing.
I think she's moved, has there a motion on table already?
No, it hasn't been seconded.
No, because Counsel Victor's thinking about it, and so are we, but.
Can I make that motion then?
Sure, okay, and now it's seconded by Counsel Victor, okay? So this is the same wording as the last motion, that we give it first and second reading, and add a, a, a presentation by staff on items, and we can name them right now on the afternoon of, is the public hearing on July 8th for sure, Mr. Becken? Yeah, so then the afternoon of, of July 8th, which is gonna be a long day, that's fine. We're gonna have a presentation on the other item, and now we would add this. And specifically, it's going to be on tree retention? Counsel Victor, what was it on?
Yes, and, and stream, relocating and reconstructing streams. I wanna know where they are, and why we need to relocate them or reconstruct them. And if we look at the, I guess it's the GeoSource picture on page 14, the westerly block of land might be a better location for school and park by putting school maybe in the middle with park in the forested area around it, so at least we could keep that forested area, and then move all the housing over to the eastern block there.
Okay.
But those, those are the questions I would like to address.
Okay, they're on the list, and so signing of the park, I think is the best way to describe that, right? And Counsel Whitmarsh, on the amendment, I guess it is? The amendment being just to add the public, the presentation prior to the?
Yeah, I guess I just, I don't know how much precedent setting we're gonna be doing here now with our applications. We're gonna have to have their presentations prior to third reading on all of our applications. I wanna, I, I'm not sure we need it on this one. I think it's very clear with the trees, what's happening. There are 580 final trees, plus an additional 103 trees being planted offsite. So it's, in the end, it's a significant number of trees that are gonna be on that site, which is a vast improvement from what is currently there. So I'm not sure we need that in this particular time. I think the information is quite clear in this report, and I don't think we should be setting precedent, needing special presentations before every application at third reading. So I would say no on this one.
Thank you, Counsel Woodward.
Yeah, I think, I'm also gonna echo some of that, but not entirely. So the, the way I see the issue, Mr. Becken, if you could clarify this, these presentations are coming from a common source of friction around some of the development process. So in reviewing the, some of the Gloucester stream side protection items, I've sort of learned a little bit more about SPEA, and I think it'd be important to, to get up to speed for all of us to be refreshed again, that, that not all streams are created equal, unfortunately. That, that we have some cases where somebody went around and called every ditch a stream, and now we're dealing with relocating a stream, which sounds bad on paper, but really we're talking about a roadside ditch. So I think it would be really important to maybe include it specific to this application, but generalize the content, so that, that we're not in a situation where we're, we're looking for presentations for every application coming forward. This isn't precedent, this is dealing with trees and stream side, and we can generalize the, generalize the presentation a little, specific to this, but also on the understanding that the same kind of issues are coming, be coming up again and again in the future. Maybe to the point where we don't have to have it for every application, but that once we get a little bit up to speed on some of these issues, that, you know, stream side ditches becoming streams and so on, that, that that's probably what's occurring here, get that clarified, and then review some of the issues around Arborist reports, so that it's not really just to get this development through the process, but also to generalize it for, for future policy considerations, if that makes sense. Does that, does that, does that make sense? All right, thank you.
Oh, I pushed the wrong button. Counsel Anderson, you're up.
Yes, well, thank you. I, I'm sort of not wanting to weigh into this, because I think it's somewhat problematic. It's a challenge to look at an application where superficially it appears that there's only a couple of reasonable outcomes. And unfortunately, you know, the trees, even though we have substitute or replacement trees, I totally understand that, so I don't wanna get into the philosophical debate about which trees are better, and why, you know, we need to protect them. I, I just look at an opportunity and say, I think really what's missing is part of this equation. I'm happy to hear more about the SPEA, I'm happy to hear more about environmental trade-offs. But one of the things some other communities do is they actually have another advisory body in addition to staff that looks at this from an environmental point of view. So I think that would be very helpful in this case. I know we have LAPS, but they don't undertake that activity anymore. We also don't have an environmental advisory committee anymore. And so I really think that if there was an opportunity, unfortunately, it seems now we need to understand more clearly what the options are. But I think it's our obligation to look at that. We have a sustainability charter, and every time we make a decision that's going to be negatively impactful, whether or not it's fish-bearing stream, it's nutrient stream, whatever it is, they all have merit. And therefore, I think it's really important to understand what it is that we are doing, and whether or not we collectively agree that this is going to be a positive outcome for the community. I have no doubt that this is a wonderful development, I don't have any problem with the houses, they look great. But I just look at the fundamentals of what it is that we're doing in our community as we grow out. So I think it's really key to have some more information. And I don't think it harms anything if there's a short amount of time that goes by. And clearly, if there's no, me, I'll call it a meeting of the minds. You know, we're not necessarily, I think, established in where we want to be in all of this. And I'm hoping that with a little more time and some diligence of putting this forward, we can all be more clear about what it is that it means to be doing these things. Because we're not, as counselors, we're laypersons, we're not trained professionals. I'm not a qualified professional, and I don't wanna tread on those people's professional territory. But what I would say is, it's my obligation to look at this and to do the best thing I can for the community and the environment, so I'm happy to support looking into this a little further.
Thank you, and Counsel Victor, I think, is that right?
No, I didn't, thanks.
No, I'm sorry.
My mic just went on.
Oh, that's you, okay, then you're on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I, I also wanna make the point, we don't want to reinvent history every particular time we look at an application. But this particular case, and the last one, there's reasons to, and it gives council an opportunity to have a short presentation, an update on our policy, an update on our environmental regulations, because we have quite a few, and an update of the process. So that way, we can also ask questions prior to the meeting and prior to the presentation, and we be prepared for when the time comes for the public hearing and a third reading. So I think this is a good particular step, without reinventing history every single time we do it. Thank you.
All right, so this is on the amendment, add a, a small presentation, and we will be, perhaps be able to have some cross purposes with this and the other motion that was passed, if, should, should this pass, because we're talking about very similar things. But I might point out, Counsel Ferguson, everything we do, we're creating history. All right, there you go, a bit of a light, thank you, that's good, isn't it? All right, any more discussion on the amendment, which is to add this small, or this presentation prior to the public hearing? Any more discussion, all, we'll call the vote, I'm not sure how to do it. What number, F5, okay? And it passes with Counsel Whitmarsh opposed. All right, now back to the main motion, which has been amended, to add the presentation. Is there any more discussion on it? Then we'll call the vote on F5, is it F5? Yes, it is, I'm getting, I'm getting rid of this now. And Counsel Kunst, there you are. And now it passes with Counsel Victor opposed. All right, so that's it for the first and second readings, I think. So we will move now to bylaws for first, second, and third reading. This is the H1, which is the Tree Protection Bylaw. That, well, that's, yes, you're right, I'm standing corrected. Now, is there any, well, first of all, we're talking about Tree Protection Bylaw 5478, 5481, 5482. Would staff like to give an explanation, or are we all, is council all clear on this? We're doing some rescinding or some reconsideration of parts of the bylaw to make it all proper? But basically, we're considering third reading of this, which we had the public hearing a couple of weeks ago.
That's, that's correct. We had to pick up some of the amendments along the way, and that required some consequential amendments and other bylaws. So that's referencing why there is some reference to rescinding other bylaws, so we can make the, the package mesh, mesh as council directed. So effectively, we have the bylaw getting third, as amended, and we have the bylaws that support it also being amended, being taken back to third, then giving third over again, so that we've got uniformity in our, our bylaws.
All right, so that being explained, may I have a motion for consideration of third reading on each one? Moved by Counsel Woodward and seconded by Counsel Kunst. And discussion? We're ready to vote? Are you ready to vote? Oh, okay. Yeah, well, this is your chance, there we go, Counsel Woodward is speaking to it.
There's really nobody else, okay. So I, for all that, the full audience after many years of trying to get a Tree Protection Bylaw, I think it's great to finally be here, but I did have a couple of amendments, so I'll outline them, and then if there's anybody else that wants to speak to them before I specifically move them. But after the public input, I am kinda convinced that we should go from 30 centimeters down to 20 centimeters under item 6.1I. And also look at removing the species exclusion, because I heard loud and clear that all trees matter. So we should look at modifying the definition of Tree A and remove that CCs exclusion. And those were the, the two changes that I at least had at this point, thank you.
Okay, so you're gonna move those in one amendment?
I will, if there's nobody else talking, I'll move those.
Is that, is that okay, does staff catch that?
Probably move them separately, maybe.
Should we do them separately? Let's start off with the 6.1I, which I believe is the changing of the diameter of the, and I had that word this afternoon, it's breast height, is what they call it. So that's been moved by Counsel Woodward, is there a second of?
Centimeters to 20.
Seconded by Counsel Anderson, so that is to change it from 30 to 20 centimeters for the DBH.
Correct.
Diameter at DBH, so.
I think it speaks for itself, thanks.
Speaks for itself? That's right, isn't that what I said? I may not have said that, but I meant to, all right, any discussion on that? Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think we, when we put the tree bylaw and we discussed it, we, right from the beginning, talked about it being at 30 centimeters. There are some other communities that have it at 30 as well. And, you know, I think that was an appropriate size, can, trying to balance off the interests of protection of trees, and protection of significant trees in our community, and, you know, the, the ability for property owners to remove trees when, when necessary. And so 30 centimeters was a good, a good number, seemed to be a good, an appropriate number that, that balanced the, those two important parts of our community. I think going to 20 centimeters would be a statement around what we think around property owners and their ability to, to manage their own properties. And so I think, you know, I certainly wouldn't support that, I think it should remain at 30. We indicated as well that the 30 centimeters where that was measured, and that was at 1.4 meters from the ground. And so I think that's an important point, and so I certainly would not be supporting taking a step backwards on this, on this tree bylaw.
Okay, thank you, and Counsel Woodward, you're up again.
Speak to the, the amendment a bit more. Yeah, I, I view actually 20 to 30 as a step forward, not a, not a step backwards, based upon some of the public input and some of the bit more reading I've done about tree preservation and protection since then. I think the exclusion for one tree every two years, not subject to this restriction, more than addresses those concerns. I think there's a lot of other concerns that we're gonna need to look at in the next year or so. And if it turns out that the 20's too thin, that we could revisit it. Like, one great comment I heard last week was that, how is it fair that someone with a 10,000 square foot lot with two trees can remove one, 50% of their trees, and I have five acres with 100 trees, and I get to remove 1% of my trees? And there's a number of good feedback that we're gonna hear over a period of time, and, and I don't see a lot, and we know we're gonna be coming back and revisiting this. I don't, I don't see a big problem with the 20 to 30, based upon the one tree per two-year exclusion, which I'm not gonna be recommending or discussing tonight, suggesting that we change that. So I think that, plus the CCs exclusion, are, are good changes that can always be undone later.
Okay, so we're talking about 11 and so inches down to 7.8 inches, or something like that, for those that think about it in inches. Counsel Victor?
Yeah, I'm just wanting a clarification, Counsel Woodward keeps saying the 20 to?
Well, it's 30 to 20, it's 30 in the bylaw now.
It's 30 coming down to 20, not 20 going up to 30.
No, so 30 exists.
Is that what, because he keeps saying 20 to 30.
Well, then it's just a mistake, then it's 30 to 20, and it's in a couple of places in the bylaw.
Yeah, it's, it's 30 to 20, that's the motion.
And it's in more than just 6I, it's in a couple of spots in the definitions, and the goal is to catch them all.
All right, we could have the motion read back if we're not clear, but that's, may I understand? It does, so we take the reference out to 6.1, which I put in there, which doesn't, is not relevant. Any discussion now on this amendment to reduce it from 30 to 20? No? All right, then we shall open the amendment.
Calling it?
Once I figure out how to push the buttons, I gotta go to the letter H now, and one. Okay, we're gonna call the amendment right now. Okay, and it passes with Counsel Whitmarsh, Kunst, and long opposed. Okay? And then you had a second amendment, right?
To remove the?
Oh, my apologies, just went, there you go. You're on.
To remove the species exclusion outlined in Tree Definition, Item A, such that, like I said, all trees matter, and I heard that loud and clear, thanks.
Okay, can we get a, someone point to us where that is in here, which, which item is it?
Page three, Item Tree Definition, that's for the species exclusion.
Page three, okay. All right, does everybody see it? I don't see it.
Page three, Tree Definition, Item A.
Oh, I see, including alder, birch, and cottonwoods, so you're?
30 centimeters would have to be changed there as well.
Well, that's already been done, but you're saying to remove the not including, so you're gonna strike that? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, strike that, correct.
Okay, so that's right, so under Tree Definition on A, the words not including, and the, and the three trees is being removed in this amendment. We clear on that? Okay, and it's moved by Counsel Woodward and seconded by Counsel Anderson. Okay, so now we have discussion on that, Counsel Ferguson. Go ahead, Counsel Ferguson.
Okay, thank you, I, I think the bylaw needs a little bit of time. I wouldn't, I'm exploring this a year from now, I think that I'm always caught and surrounded by the types of species that are in the bylaw that seem to be dangerous or hazardous, hazardous to some, and, and not to others. Sometimes they grow well and strong, and other times they don't. And certainly, I'm not an arborist, but I'd like to at least give it a year. And so I won't be supporting this, but I wouldn't mind reviewing it again as time progresses with our new bylaw. Thank you.
All right, and Counsel Victor?
Yeah, I'm not so sure about cottonwoods. I don't mind removing the birch and the other one, but I think we should believe in cottonwoods then.
Okay, well, I guess we can see how this goes, Counsel Woodward, you're up again.
Yeah, no, I think, again, those are, these are perfectly reasonable approaches to review it later on. I think, again, I'm gonna keep coming back to the exclusion of one tree per, every two years with no explanation, no restrictions, is kind of the catch-all to, to also deal with these kinds of species. So I think the, the feedback that I received, that I thought was very rational and reasonable, was that the species exclusion, which exists in some other bylaws, doesn't have that other one, which allows one tree for every two years. And so the one tree per two years, no explanation, no fee, any reason you like, you don't like the look of it, whatever the reason is, that could be one of the cottonwood or alders on your property, thanks.
Okay, Counsel Anderson.
Yes, thank you. As to the trees, all I can tell you is give trees a chance. And so I, I really support what's being talked about here. I, I didn't want this whole bylaw to fail on some amendments, because I understand that there is some concern regarding certain trees. But it just occurs to me, you know, when you look at trees as a nuisance species, we really don't appreciate all of the things that they do for us. And habitat is certainly something I think that we need to take into account. But the other thing that occurs to me is that many times, if there's a tree disease, and say you have nothing but a monoculture, or predominantly one type of species, and say you have nothing but a monoculture, or predominantly one type of species, what you're going to find is that the whole group of trees is going to be susceptible, and they will die, and what is going to be left. I really think that we need to have as much diversity as possible in our tree population. I think it's good for wildlife, I think it's good for birds, I think it's good generally for people. I've lived in environments where people were all cowering, you know, looking at these trees and thinking, oh, they're widowmakers. But, you know, those trees were there for years and years and never caused a problem, but I can see any day of the week now, with higher winds and the different kind of storms that we're having these days, perfectly sound trees can absolutely come down in an instant. So I, I think we have to be careful about the degree to which we are just homogenizing the trees together, and so I certainly am supportive. I, I support also the idea of looking at this within a year to see what's been effective and what kind of tweaks we can do to this whole bylaw. But I think we really need to create a township-wide bylaw, and that I think it's really, really appropriate to look at climate mitigation and to look at our sustainability charter and all of our other policies when we make this decision, because as far as I'm concerned, there's no going back.
Any other speakers? I had a question then. When we look at reports, and we get them all the time, and it says significant trees, so it says there are so many significant trees on a property, are these trees included in that definition of significant trees?
Yes. Currently.
Well, that's the answer. So when we, when we say significant, I guess it's about the diameter of them, is it, or the size? Or is it the type of tree by any chance?
It is a combination of diameter and size and species. Mr. Richardson, am I correct? Without referring to the bylaw?
Oh, it looks like...
The current bylaw, Mr. Chair, has a definition for what constitutes a significant tree. So, Mr. Chair, perhaps you can, if you don't mind, re-read, or restate your question. Is it to do with the, the current bylaw as it currently sits?
Well, no, I'm actually thinking of all the reports that we've seen over the years when it talks about significant trees being removed from a development.
Thank you. That's what I thought.
The definition of significant tree, does it include these three species, is my question?
Yeah, so it, it is not the current tree bylaw that's currently being deliberated by council then?
No.
It is, yeah. So there's a definition in the current bylaw, the current subdivision and development servicing bylaw, as far as the significant tree is concerned, and it's a combination of size and species. The size is 30 centimeters, which is 12 inches. If it's below that, then it's not counted as a significant tree. And as well...
Then in terms of species?
Alders, birch, big-leaf maple, and hemlock. So my, my original que, my response was correct, Mr. Chair, there aren't any distinctions in terms of species in the current subdivision and development servicing bylaw with respect to significant trees. It does not distinguish between species, it's just the diameter.
Size of them.
That's correct.
All right, thank you so much. Any more discussion, then we can call the vote. Now, this is on the amendment that is taking out the references to the three species of trees. Okay, and that passes with Counselor Ferguson, Kunst, and Long opposed. And now we're still, now we have two amendments to the bylaw. Are there any others? Okay, Counselor Richter?
Well, in light of what Mr. Safie has just said, that the current subdivision bylaw doesn't specify types of trees, so now the tree bylaw doesn't specify types of trees, but the current subdivision bylaw does say that anything less than 30 centimeters diameter is, is not a significant tree. So I think our, this first cut at the tree bylaw should match the provisions in the current subdivision bylaw, so I'd like to move reconsideration of the First Amendment, taking it from 20 down to 30. I'd like to change my vote on that, which will make it a tie vote, which is a defeat vote.
All right, so this is a question for, for the clerk then, what the procedure would be. So a counselor is requesting reconsideration, and that's all that has to happen? Please, Ms. Bauer.
As the motion to reconsider is being made by someone who voted in support, it would be fine.
Okay. Do we need a second?
Yes, we do.
All right, so there's a second to reconsider that. But it doesn't matter who the second is? Counselor Whitmarsh is seconding it then. All right, so now we're reconsidering through a motion by Counselor Richter to reconsider the 20 centimeters. So we did go from 30 to 20, and I imagine your amendment is to go back to 30.
My amendment is to go back to 30 and keeping with the current subdivision bylaw, so that we have consistency between the two.
Okay, and Counselor Woodward, do you like to speak to that?
Reconsideration?
Yep.
No, I'll...
Okay, we're just going to vote on reconsideration first, is that right? Or do we vote on the motion?
Actually, I would like, I'd like to speak to it.
Okay, and is, is there debatable on the reconsideration?
Yes, reconsideration's debatable, but you have to stick to the subject of the reconsideration.
To the, to the point of reconsideration.
So I don't, I don't feel reconsideration of this bylaw is necessary. I feel that the solution would be to amend the subdivision and development servicing bylaw.
Oh, yeah, okay, I hear you. Any other discussion? Okay, then we're going to call the question now on this amendment, correct?
The reconsideration.
Just the reconsideration. So how do I call that one?
For the case of the voting pad, it would be considered an amendment.
Okay, amendment to one again, I guess, okay. Are you ready? I'll call the question on the amendment now, on the reconsideration. That's right. Okay, and it does pass with Woodward, Counselor Woodward, Counselor Arneson, and Counselor Davis opposed. So now we are reconsidering again, and we can debate again, changing it from 30 to 20, because currently that's the way it is.
The motion's back on the floor, I believe.
So is, so is it, the same motion is back on the floor? Okay, so the motion that we're debating is to switch it from 30 to 20. I'm going to clear the queue, if you don't mind?
Sure.
Because I got a little confused, and we'll start again. Whoever would like to speak now to this motion that's back on the floor. And first is Counselor Richter.
Yeah, and we have a provision going forward that we will review in a year's time by means of a, a community committee or task group of some sort, whether these provisions are adequate or inadequate, or they need to be changed. But I think for the sake of consistency over the next year, we should keep the tree bylaw aligned with the subdivision bylaw. And if the subdivision bylaw, and maybe Mr. Safie could specify this again, anything less than a 30-centimeter tree is not considered significant in the subdivision bylaw. Is that correct?
Thank you for the opportunity, Counselor Richter. Mr. Chair, the current subdivision bylaw does not have a specification with respect to the species. However...
Okay.
Staff have been working on, that's why both Mr. Richardson and myself were a little bit confused, because we were remembering certain things as to what we've been doing, what we've been working on. We have been working on a, an amendment to the bylaw that deals with a number of things, omnibus bylaw, if you will, to the subdivision and development servicing bylaw, which in part is intended, has been intended, to include an exclusion, a species exclusion list to the significant tree definition. And we hope to bring that to council before the summer break.
Okay, but if we're looking beyond the species, the size of the trees, does the current subdivision bylaw specify a tree that is less than 30 centimeters is not a significant tree?
That's correct.
That is correct, and that is in the subdivision bylaw.
That's correct.
Okay, and then we've already dealt with the other one on the species, so thank you, Counselor Richter. Counselor Woodward again.
Yeah, I'll just reiterate that, no, I fully respect people's, people's rights to, to change their minds at the table and get, and get the bylaw to where they feel it should be. I'll just reiterate again that it's not really the issue of 20 or 30 in this bylaw, it's 20 or 30, and the solution is to amend the subdivision and development servicing bylaw to maintain consistency, and I'll reiterate again that the catch-all exclusion to remove any tree you want on your property, one per two years, which is something I've so far supported, provides a catch-all to, again, deal with this diameter issue. And I'll just leave it at that. Thanks.
Any other speakers now? So now we're back to, we know what we're voting on, this is the, the motion now to change it from 30 to 20. We're reconsidering that.
Change it from 20 back to 30?
No, no, no. Let's be clear here. So we're reconsidering the motion, and the motion was to go from 30 to 20. So it is now back on the table to go from 30 to 20. All right, we're all clear? I hope. All right, so now I'm going to call the vote on that, which is an amendment, right? An amendment each one. Okay, so now it fails, right?
I'm the only one.
You're the only one that wants to go to smaller trees. So it fails with Counselor Ferguson, Richter, Whitmarsh, Kunst, Long, Arneson, and Davis opposed.
Showtime, poor debater I am.
Very interesting. Okay, let's keep going, because we don't want to go back and have to do that one again. Any other amendments to... Counselor Whitmarsh, you're up for more amendments?
Yeah, thank you. Just for clarification for me, and maybe I didn't see it in here, but when I look at this, on the exemptions on 6.1i, where it talks about the tree is less than 30 centimeters, we did talk about where that would be measured, and it doesn't state it in here. I'm wondering if I'm missing it, but...
Oh, I've done some research, Counselor Whitmarsh.
Well, thank you.
Because it says at DBH, which is the standard method of expressing the diameter of a trunk or bowl of a standing tree, diameter at breast height, which is 1.5 meters.
At breast height? Is that what you said?
Well, it's the breast of a certain person.
Obvi...
It may not be me.
Yeah, I think that's, that's true. So if you were like 6'8" or something.
Yeah, that's right. So DBH, please, okay, in answer to Counselor Whitmarsh, let's get an official answer. What is the definition of DBH? Because that's what it says in the bylaw.
Can I maybe just get clarification through the chair from staff?
That's what I'm asking for. I'm asking for staff to give, to back me up on this.
Yes, it is a standard that is used, Mr. Chair, which is, as you have said, diameter as, at breast height, and is typically 1.4 meters.
1.4 meters.
I'm right here, Mr. Bucknill, the arborist.
1.4 meters?
1.4.
Okay. It's 1.4 meters, Counselor Whitmarsh.
All right, that's, that's helpful. I didn't know what DBH was. Thank you. I had a second point.
Please.
If you don't mind. 6.2, so this has come up a, a bit as well about the one-tree parcel during a 24-month period. This does talk in here about a permit is required, but the permit fee and the arborist's report are not required. Is it implicit in this that this is also without rationale, or is that what's implicit in this, or should, should it actually state without rationale? Or is that implicit because you don't have an arborist's report, therefore?
It's implicit, I don't know.
I guess it's a question through to staff, just what that...
Mr. Backen, can you clarify the wording on 6.2?
It would be implicit. I, I think the, the bylaw will stand on its own, just by way of its definitions.
Okay, that's fine then, thank you.
All right, and now Counselor Davis.
Just, just to clarify, quick question through to staff. Maybe to staff, it says here, I also, I think that in a year's time that we could make head nor tail of this tree, or one lot. A parcel means, you know, a small parcel versus a big parcel, there's going to be more trees. But it says hazardous trees means a tree identified by writing, by certified tree risk assessment as having defects, significance, significant increase that likelihood that all or part of the tree will fall, resulting in risk, personal injury, and private property. Do we have, are we protected if we're going to support this bylaw? If, if we go in or a tree assessment person says, no, the tree looks good, leaves, next day the tree falls down, we've denied the applicant a, a permit to take one, a dangerous tree down? Are we protected? Do we have an insurance policy that will protect us? How does that work on this, on this tree bylaw?
We would have two levels of protection. I'll be careful how I choose my words. The arborist or the, the person inspecting it would have no liability, as long as they conducted their review in standard industry-accepted fashion and were deemed to have not been negligent in carrying out their review. If they were negligent, then they would have a liability because of their negligence. I think there would be a series of steps that would have to be met, but given the circumstances of the facts, as you presented them, I think you would see that they are likely to be negligent in case of the facts you provided, that if it, you know, the very next day it falls down and the happens of a windstorm or something that's beyond reasonable expectations, that fact pattern would lead one to think that there would be some negligence, in which case then, that's the first level of defense gone. You, you hope that it's just an opinion that was in error but not negligent. If it's been negligent, then you fall back to the next level, which is going to be the insurance. Generally speaking, there would be insurance coverage for some of those matters, but of course, it depends upon the nature of the claim, and all likelihood there would at least be deductible. But overall, those sorts of things do not happen all that frequently, they're, they're pretty rare.
Okay, but the certified tree risk assessor, is that somebody that we recognize, or is that us as a township?
You didn't specify that, so I take the assumption that it was a staff person that did it. If you're actually talking about independent contractor, the same rules apply to them, but not to us. Our requirement does not provide us with any liability. If we set a standard, and we are not the inspector of that standard or the reviewer of that standard, if it's provided to us by a third party, a professional, then they would bear the risk and liability.
So we're, we're, we're basically protected, but it would be insurance?
Correct. So the, the example would be if our arborists are looking at a tree and they make a mistake, we could have liability. If the applicant is making, or if a third party is making the assessment in terms of getting a permit over to us, and they make a mistake, they would have the liability.
Yeah, okay. That really throws, yeah, I guess I, you, I wouldn't want to be a tree risk, a tree risk assessor unless I had a, unless I was, well, we, we shouldn't recognize anybody that doesn't have a insurance, like, you know, the fellow that talked here at the public hearing, and he said he wasn't an arborist, but he was running around cutting trees down all the time. So...
A relative of yours?
No, no, it's the other fellow. And he, I guess, so I guess, he's not here, is he?
No.
No, but I just would wonder that, I guess, we're, if you don't have a license and this happens, and we deny the, we, we have to have insurance or a license from a risk, we're not going to deal with them.
Yeah, and I think the key is certified, right? It says in the, in the definition, it says certified person, so that means you'd have to hold a certificate.
It's got to be more than a certified, or a, okay, you know what? I think, I think I've understood, I think we've, I think that we, this bylaw would take us through that, that that ever occurred. Thanks.
Counselor Ferguson?
I think we're getting down close to the final vote. I don't think there's any amendments left here. I think that we've got a bylaw in front of us. Thank you. Anyway, I'll speak anyway.
Anyway, I'll speak anyway, I might not speak again, but here we are, we're getting very close to consideration at third reading of a tree protection bylaw, which the township of Langley is one of the last of a municipality of its size within the region to do so. Of course, we're a very diverse community with seventy-five plus percent of our land in, in the ALR and all sorts of rural communities, and we're also a growing, growing community, but having said that, I think it's certainly, I think we've done a good job, staff has a good job, a compliment to staff and council, and of course the public for putting the input in, I think now is the time to move forward and, and make changes in the future if, if needed, but I think we've done a good job, and I'm, I'm looking forward to supporting this bylaw, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kuntz.
Um, yeah, I just was wondering if we have a dangerous tree bylaws, they do in the district of North Vancouver, and if we don't, is it something that we should consider in light of what, I was just thinking along the lines of what David, if people run into a dangerous tree, I live in a neighborhood with actually lots of big significant trees, and last year two of them came down, and so just wondering about that.
Mister Chair, the, the bylaw does provide for a qualified professional identifying a hazardous tree, which would then be exempt from, from the tree bylaw, and that's in the case of a hazardous tree which, which would have public safety implications if it was to remain.
Okay. Okay, I have no more speakers, oh, now we do, okay, councillor Woodward, you might have an amendment.
No, no more amendments, you know, I think, you know, I looked at the bylaw and I, I can, I can see that there's, we're not going to, we're not going to perfect it on the first try, so I, I just wanted to restore some confidence to those that, that are following the process, that, that there's still going to be lots of opportunities over the next few years, I think, to, to make some amendments, I see lots of bureaucratic requirements even to remove one of the, one trees per two years, which I think is going to be some work, and I think we, you know, have done the best we can in a short period of time, and I, I appreciate all the comments and the changes to the bylaw, but to some degree I do believe we've created a tree protection bylaw that doesn't really protect trees, and, and I hope that over time we can, we can make some further improvements, thanks.
All right, are there any other speakers, so I guess right now we're, we're, we have the final version in front of us, there's no more amendments, so we're voting on the actual motion now, on third reading? All right, as, as amended, yeah? Okay, so we'll call the vote then. Just a sec, I have to. And it passes with no objections.
Yay!
All right, so we'll move on now to the best part of the meeting, no, apparently not, this is the mayor's report, please, nobody leave, uh, staff? Oh my gosh.
[laughter]
All right, so good evening, everybody, and I'm sending regrets from Mayor Froze, who's unable to attend tonight's meeting, he's quite healthy and everything, but he's on assignment with Metro Vancouver at some other location, so I'd like to begin this evening though by expressing our deep and collective sadness in the recent loss of our MP Mark Warawa. Mark served this community and country well as our Member of Parliament, for Mark, community came first, he was respected by all who knew and worked with him, no matter where they sat on the political spectrum, and our condolences go out to Mark's wife, Diane, their five children and ten grandchildren, if I have that correct, I believe, and family and friends. So there's a nice picture of Mark up there, and for those that haven't heard, the celebration of life of Mark will be at Christian Life Assembly on July the fifth at 2:00 PM. So over the past week, Mayor Froze has attended the following events, on Thursday, June the twentieth, he welcomed a Korean delegation to the municipal hall, which included the mayor of Gapeong, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, and there they are. On, on Thursday, excuse me, on Saturday, June the twenty-second, was the Royal Rotary Interpretive Centre opening at the Derek Double Dea Arboretum, several members of council attended the event, including myself, I think councillor Ferguson, councillor Kuntz, councillor Whitmarsh were there, and after years of planning and a lot of hard work from dedicated members of our community, the centre is now finally open. It was the township's plan to create a building that would act as a welcome centre and an interpretive centre for the Derek Double Dea Arboretum, and this spectacular building is so much more, it will serve as an educational facility where people can learn about sustainability and the plant life that surrounds us, it will be a place to meet, to gather, and office space, office space for those volunteer organisations that are involved with the park. And the Special Olympics annual walkathon and barbecue was held on Saturday, June twenty-second, at the Walmer Grove Track, with councillor Ferguson and Whitmarsh also in attendance, and I think the mayor was there as well, of course. Now, myself as acting mayor, I attended the Canadian Blood Services Event on Tuesday, June the eleventh, for the thousands of Canadian hospital patients who need blood and blood products, support starts in the community, and it's wonderful to know that there are so many caring and committed people contributing right here in Langley, so I encourage everybody to, to continue to give blood, if you're giving blood, and if you haven't, maybe consider doing so, it's the gift of life. On Saturday, June the fifteenth, the city of Langley mayor Val Van den Brock and, and I attended the opening of Henry's, there we are, it's Canada's greatest camera store, and it's right on the border really of the two Langleys, it's their new location, and we certainly are excited to see that they are here to offer local photographers and videographers, you know, they've been in business for around a hundred years across Canada, this is the first time they're opening stores here in British Columbia. Later that day, I was off to MacLeod Park for the Langley Blaze Premier Baseball League All-Star Game, here I am apologising to the audience for not getting the ball across the plate, but anyway, the Premier Baseball League is the most competitive baseball league in British Columbia, where the top players in our province play, I did throw the first pitch, and they were very proud, of course, of the facility that we have partnered with the Blaze and made artificial turf there so that there can be more play on it. On June the fifteenth, councillor Kuntz and I also attended the twenty-fifth anniversary celebration of the Alder Grove Telephone Museum and Community Archives, but we went alone, councillor Wood was there early in the day, and councillor Arnesson as well, there was cake, and there was still some left by the time I got there, plenty of displays and lots of people sharing stories, in fact, it was amazing, Carl from Willoughby, what's his last name, councillor Ferguson, you know who it is, Carl from the Willoughby Hall, he showed up because he said, yeah, and great, yeah, and he said that he worked there in nineteen fifty-seven, not necessarily in this location, but in that building doing some work for the, wasn't called BCTL at that time, there was another name for it, but anyway, lots of stories being shared, so congratulations to the Alder Grove Telephone Museum and Community Archives. On the seventeenth of June, on Monday, I attended the Encompass CARF International Forum and an orientation conference that was at the Langley Youth Resource Centre, and I must say that, that we are to be very proud of that facility, and many of the folks that I met there, in fact, all the folks I met there, were just giving praise to that facility and the work that we've done to make sure it's there, so they had some assessments of their work, and it's a standard of practice to make sure that they're providing the services that are appropriate, and it's an event that lasts two days, and it's, it's just a really nice tune-up for everybody involved. Tuesday, the June eighteenth, councillor Kuntz and I attended Our Living Languages Reception at the Langley Centennial Museum, this travelling exhibit, exhibition provides villagers with visitors with an interactive look at the state of indigenous languages in our province, and celebrates the resilience in the face of change, and language playing such a huge role in our identity and our culture. The exhibition, I encourage you all to visit, it's there till September, provides a unique opportunity to explore and learn the history and the resilience of the thirty-four indigenous languages that we have in British Columbia, and I believe that we have sixty-five percent of all the indigenous languages spoken in Canada are here in British Columbia, so it was a very fascinating, so you must check it out, it's an interactive display that has been at the B.C. Royal Museum in Victoria, and now it's on the road, and we were the first to have it on this, on its stop, so we're very proud of that. There are many other events, councillor Arnesson, councillor Richter attending the International Making Cities Liberal Conference, councillor Arnesson also attended the Fraser Health Regional Municipal Meeting, and councillor Kuntz attended the Langley Secondary School Graduation, councillor Ferguson attended the Brookswood Senior Secondary Graduation, as well as the Greater Langley Chamber of Commerce Dinner, so are there any other, because this is a mayor and council's report, are there any other councillors that would wish to add to this? Councillor Arnesson, away you go.
Uh, yes, thank you very much, that was really a good segue actually, because towards the end was about the Portland Conference, and so I just want to take a couple of minutes to talk about that, it was such a rich opportunity, as mentioned councillor Richter and I attended the week-long event, I was totally impressed by the calibre, it was my first time being at this international event, and just the scholarship and the people that were speaking there made it such a great experience, also the opportunity network, so some of the things I bought back with me are ideas about town squares, integrating green infrastructure and complete inactive streets, healthy cities, urban design in the face of worldwide crisis, and affordability, that's the thing that was really underlined, everybody's got a affordability problem, sustainable transportation planning, and a, a number of other topics, I think it's most critical actually that we have, in addition to our daily activities and all the things that we do in terms of our community that make a difference today, that we are as proactive as possible to have a vision for the future, because we are building what our community will be like for the next forty, fifty, sixty years, so I just want to mention that one of the authors that was there, I bought a very nice book actually, and we have a civic library here, I think councillor Woodward might like the name, I was thinking of you when I bought it, it's called Creating Thriving Neighborhoods and Adapting to a Changing World: Fixing Your City, and so it's got a number of really accessible ideas about what can be done, and my overall takeaway from this is that, one, I think of the underlying themes is that in building out our urban area and our environment, we need to make sure that the most vulnerable, including seniors, elders, and the disabled, as well as the financially marginalised, are continued to be looked at as important and viable members in our community, so we make sure that we're planning for their needs, and, and just one other note, I don't see him here anymore, but I believe Mr He was here earlier, and he is the one that had the petition of twenty-five hundred names, and I was charged with taking it to Fraser Health, some of you who saw the headlines might know that he was looking for Fraser Health to rescind their parking policy so that people could get four hours of free parking in emergency, well, stay tuned, because their bureaucracy is now going to respond.
All right, thank you, councillor Davis.
Maybe on a lighter note, the Valley Ball Hockey, we, this, earlier when we started the season, we had a few blit, few challenges, but we got over them, and I'd like to acknowledge the hard work and all the effort that Greg McDougall and everyone else at the Valley Ball Hockey for planning the ball hockey playoffs and the gold medal games this last weekend, and there was lots of kids, families, and excitement, there's well over a thousand kids that play ball hockey in the Valley League, and a large, a lot of them are right from here in Langley, and now they're off to the provincial games, that some will be played right here in the township, and my son Desmond and Gavin wrote this, they're both off to the provincials, so they won their gold medal, so well done to the Valley Ball Hockey and everyone who supports it, thank you.
And is the facility successful up there?
Oh, yeah, everyone, it was well-used, and the concrete is, is almost perfect.
Excellent, all right, councillor Ferguson?
Councillor Davis, we still have the jersey, we can suit up next year, I did want to say that a number of years ago, someone came up to council and said they wanted to put a winery in, in the township of Langley, and first thing the council says, well, you can't, you can't grow grapes in Langley, anyway, last night, weekend, my wife and I attended the white dinner at Township Seven, and I believe Township Seven is an area parcel of the township of Langley, but I just wanted to point that out, I won't be mentioning it in any other times, but the opportunity to do bring the Chaberton was the first one to come along, and that was a question asked, they want to put a winery in, and folks at the council table thought that they couldn't grow grapes, so the rest is history, thank you.
Interesting, okay, any other comments from other councillors? So the upcoming events is, well, we won't be meeting again until after Canada Day, so please take in some of the events, there's the celebrations in Willoughby Community Park, as well as in Fort Langley and at the Langley Centennial Museum, and of course, the Alder Grove Parade is happening on Canada Day now, that's the new date for the parade, it's going to be always on July the first, and so there's plenty of events for everyone to attend on Canada Day, so we encourage you to do so. Okay, now we can move on to other business, and we're going to turn it over to councillor Woodward, who has a notice of motion. Oh, yes, go ahead, sure.
What's coming up next is like a two-page notice of motion, could we just have it moved, like in-
I'm not going to read it.
Paragraph form, or a short paragraph, okay, great, thanks.
Okay.
No, I'm definitely going to read it.
You're back on page.
Thank you councillor, what do we call you when you're chairing the meeting, councillor?
Just Bob.
Just Bob.
No, you can't.
Just Bob, of course you were going to say that. I'm not going to read this one either, I think everyone's had a chance to read it, this is in regards to, a few weeks ago, I got a call from a resident that really, that really bothered me, it's the worst call I've gotten since getting elected, that in one year, someone's small business tax bill went up a hundred and seventy-five percent, approximately eighty thousand, a hundred thousand, I can't remember the exact number, and these bills are passed on by landlords to small business tenants, and, and we need to find a way to deal with this within the rules that, that we have, and there, there aren't many options available to us, other emails from residents, twenty percent, some, you know, even though we raised taxes three percent or four percent, people are getting tax increases of, you know, twenty percent or eight hundred dollars on a three thousand dollar bill, and some of these other examples, and there really aren't many options available to us, B.C. assessment, we, we have this system, some people appeal their assessment, some don't, we have a system that the province administrates, and, and we don't have a lot of flexibility with it, but one thing that is available to us is something called averaging and phasing, where we can mitigate some of the, the rapid changes in people's assessed values to, to smooth out the, the fluctuations in tax increases, staff tell me this hasn't really been looked at before, and that's all this motion is, is to, is to have a look at it and include it within consideration, chose that word very carefully, consideration of adopting assessment, averaging, and phasing, and that's all this is, to include that within the twenty-twenty budget.
Okay, seconded by councillor Richter, and discussion councillor, oh, how come I lost you here, let's clear the queue and start again, would you mind? Okay, councillor Richter, you have to push again, councillor Arnesson.
So I thank councillor Woodward for finding this option that we can consider, I have long been very, very concerned about how people who have lived in this community for a long time, particularly those people who are living on larger pockets of land, not in the ALR but in SR areas, are, I think, subsidizing and underwriting the, the tax increases for everybody else in this, in this community, and I'd, this is referring to staff for report, but I honestly think that if council decides, decides on a three point eight five percent tax increase, then all properties should pay three point eight five, not part of the properties, and then part of the properties spend way less, so in the case of those people with large acreages or rural properties or even SR properties, they're paying well in ex, well, over five percent, while some people on, on smaller properties, particularly condominiums, are paying probably less than two percent, that's not fair, we need to restore equity to the system, so as a first step to getting to that equity, I thank councillor Woodward for bringing this forward, and I'm definitely supporting it.
Cue, councillor Arnesson?
Well, thank you, Bishop, I also support this, councillor Woodward, I think has brought something very novel to the township of Langley, although just, I had a minute to look it up, and the city of Vancouver has done this for some time, obviously, they're in a situation where there's probably a wild fluctuation in terms of assessments, and so what seemed to be really positive about this is that apparently it doesn't decrease local tax revenue, which would be important, but it just affects the amounts that the tax is paid by an individual and an given tax share, so I think it's really important, as has been mentioned, you know, we have to make sure that the most vulnerable, and those are subjected unfortunately to sharp increases in taxes, are protected, and I, I look forward to a staff report on how this could be potentially applied in the township of Langley.
Thank you, and councillor Ferguson?
Oh, yes, thank you, mister deputy mayor, I did have a quick question to staff, I know these things have a way of balancing, as we know that B.C. assessment- I know these things have a way of balancing, as we know that BC assessments change in, from area to area within a community, house to house, and property, property does indeed vary. If I may choose there, are you finding this particular year was different than others, and there's been a, a major change either in the downturn of property, or is there other reason for some of these changes, if I may?
Sinclair's going to answer, thank you.
Yep. Through your worship to Councillor Ferguson, every year, especially in the last few years, it seems like a different category of property gets impacted. About two years ago, there was a thirty, an average increase of 35% in single-family residential. And over the last two years, that shift has gone more to the multi-family, so they've been hit a little bit harder last year and this year. So it, it does change from year to year, depending on what's going on in the real estate market. It is starting to stabilize a little bit right now. So I think what we're seeing, though, is the affordability factor in Vancouver pushing out, pushing out towards us, and further out even towards Abbotsford and Chilliwack. And that's why we're getting some of this, this pressure and volatility. I'm not an economist, but that's sort of what it looks like, the wave is kind of pushing this way. I think that's what's causing it. So it has settled down a little bit. The increase in residential this year was 7.7, and I believe the business was 10, I'm going by memory here. So it has settled down quite a bit, and kind of come to within similar ranges as well this year, but it's, definitely there's some crazy market forces out there.
So I just wanted to point those things out, because these things are cyclical change. Hopefully by next year, and when we're going over the budget.
My taxes have never gone down, Steve, of yours.
Yeah, well, that's like death and taxes. But anyway, basically, well, when we review it, hopefully you have some data going back in past years, and you'll look at, and the impact, if we make, move from one area, I hate like heck for other people, like seniors or smaller homes, and the challenge by this as well. So I'm look, I'm going to be supporting this, obviously, but I'm looking forward to reviewing the data and going forward accordingly.
Thank you. And Councillor Woodward?
Yeah, I was going to add, the way the motion is written, just want to clarify, Mr. Beck, and a couple, a couple of councillors have mentioned a report coming back, but that really wasn't my intent to, to have a report coming back specific to this, but to include it within the 2020 budget presentations and considerations, so that it wouldn't come back separately, but the intent was for Ms. Sinclair to add it for our consideration, and have staff have a chance to think about it, analyze the implications. I have discussed it with Ms. Sinclair. I can't take all the credit for this. Ms. Sinclair was very helpful, and in highlighting this as one of the options to potentially address this issue, and, and to have that reviewed and considered. And there are some considerations, there's going to be some additional cost for some additional BC assessment data, I understand, and a couple of other things for council to consider, but to consider that within the budget presentations, not as a separate report, just clarify. Thanks.
All right, Councillor Davis?
Yeah, that's exactly what I had says here, be it resolved that staff be directed to include within the 2020 budget deliberations, consideration of adopting, because I heard a couple councillors also say that we're going to get a report, get a report back. So.
Okay, well, this, this is a discussion now, because that's an interesting point.
By supporting this, and I'm not, I'm not saying yea or nay, but I'd like to see what staff have to say about this before we put it in the, in the 2020 budgets. I would, but, you know, I don't want to stall out on it, but I'm going to probably be negative if I vote against it, but I'd want to, I maybe want to understand a little more about it. So I don't want to not vote against it, but can we just change it? So because it says here deliberations, consideration of adopting. So that's kind of, you know, I, I'd like council to have that consideration of adopting it.
Well, referring it for a report is an option too, I guess.
We could actually.
Just a second, we've got a speaker, are you finished, Councillor Davis?
Well, we might have a conclusion.
Well, we can allow Mr. Beck, because he's waving his hand over there.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
There is a slight complication that council should be aware of, and that's as to the timing, because to undertake such a process, which I think has got a lot of merit, it does mean having to get it to the inspector of municipalities, but I think it's March 31st. So Karen, could you perhaps discuss the timing to actually put this into place, because it would mean a little acceleration of our process?
Just, just a few, through the chair to council, just a few items about this process. The eligible classes would be one, which is residential, five, which is light industry, business and other, which is class six, and eight, which is recreational and not-for-profit. Assessment averaging applies only to the land, so the variations that happen in the land values. It takes into consideration the current year value for the land plus the preceding two years. Prior to January 1st, the intent to employ the assessment averaging must be formally communicated to the municipal inspector at the province and BC assessment authority, so we would have to know that we're going to go for it prior to January 1st. There is a cost. BC assessment has agreed to provide an average roll. For Vancouver's cost is $25,000, I'm sure ours would be significantly less. Exclusions have to be taken into consideration. Typically, the things that are excluded are vacant land, new construction, and class transfers, in other words, moving from one class to another. After January 1st of the year, the bylaw is to take effect. At least two weeks prior to adoption of the bylaw, there has to be a notice in the newspaper, very similar to what we do with permissive tax exemptions, where you have to advertise it in the newspaper. And we have to include sample properties to show what the impact would be. Prior to March 31st, March 31st is the deadline, the bylaw must be adopted in the year that the averaging is, is to take place. So prior to March 31st, the bylaw must be adopted. And council must provide a review panel to be convened, very similar to the local area service parcel tax review panel, to, because essentially what council would be doing then is authenticating the average roll, and provide an opportunity and a place for taxpayers to come and ask questions, and maybe object to their, their property being included. So we have to provide that opportunity for the, for citizens. And then the property tax notices, last of all, of the changes that are noted in the community charter, property tax notices must alert the property owner to the fact that their property is being calculated using an average assessed value. So we just have to make them aware that that's happening on their tax notice. So those are some of the, just the highlights. I, I do believe that there'll be sort of the devils in the detail kind of thing, we need to get, get into it, but those are some of the highlights of the process.
So I hear from you that, well, you just gave me a report.
I was just going to say.
But you're also saying there's devils in the detail, and I, that's why I'm concerned. I don't want to, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, I just wanted to point that out, that you said January, no, March 31st? If it was January 1st, you, we, we have to apply, to have it put in.
I think I heard it would have to be decided well before January the 1st, that we were going to go that way, and that there's a huge process that has to be undertaken.
Our, our intention has to be made known by January 1st.
Can, can, could we, could you give us a, a report in the next, by the next meeting? And then can, can I just refer this to the next meeting? Seems like we're doing that with two or three others already tonight.
Refer, I don't know about the next meeting, but we could refer for a staff report, if that's what you're saying.
Yeah, but it doesn't have, say the next, not the next meeting, but the meeting after that. It just, I don't, I, I think it sounds really, all that glitters isn't gold, so I'd like to see what the devils in the details, or whatever it looks like.
Okay, do you want to hold that, because I have a couple more speakers, or do you want, we could entertain a motion now, what's the, what's the willing? How about we let Councillor Whitmarsh speak? Is that all right?
Yeah, oh, sure.
And then, then you can make that referral if you wish. Councillor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I think this is a creative idea, and I'm glad that Councillor Woodward's brought it forward. You know, I wasn't totally exactly sure what was being asked here, and the clarification's been helpful. And based on what we've heard from Ms. Sinclair, is that I think it would make sense for us to actually have a report come to council. I would suggest, you know, it could probably be sometime in the, in the fall, when we'd have a report on this, in which we could then discuss it and really understand the implications of this, and what it would look like, and so on, so that we can make a decision, you know, in November, December, so that we know exactly what we're doing on January 1st, and we can move forward with it. So, so I think it's a good idea. I, I think, though, that a report ahead of time, as opposed to trying to put this into the budgeting process and feeling really rushed, trying to compare different options, I think, let's do this in the fall, and I would probably want to see this, and I would certainly support referral to staff for a report sometime in the fall.
All right, so we heard that, is that motion being made then?
Sure, I'll refer.
Okay, a motion to refer to staff for a report, I guess on the practical, yeah, be fairly soon. Is there a second for that?
Second then.
Second by Councillor Whitmarsh. Councillor Richter, you were on the list, did you, did this preemptive your discussion?
I was going to suggest, probably not next meeting, but the last meeting in July, maybe we could have the report.
So as far as the timing of the report, I guess we'd leave it to staff, but could we have it before the summer break?
I think that might be fairly ambitious in terms of the preparation. I think we have to have it, no, later than September, so it can be meaningful, but I think we could probably get it by that timeframe.
So we'll get it in a timely manner, would that be okay with the mover and second? A report in a timely manner? Okay, that being the case, we're going to, is there an amendment, or how do we do this one?
Referral.
So I don't have a referral button, do I?
It would be called an amendment on the pad.
And it is M1. Okay, we're going to call the question on the referral, are we ready for that? All in favor, and not, we'll be pushing buttons. And it's, nobody objecting to referring for a report, thank you. We are now at M2, and I see it's a joint motion, so which one of yous is going to?
I can move it.
Yeah, you go right ahead. There you go, it says Ferguson's come up.
Yeah, I've come up. Ready to go?
Sure.
Rock and roll, we got it.
So, let's actually move it. I'm going to read it, Councillor Richter.
You want to read the whole thing? No, no, no.
No, if you can give me my mic, I'll quickly move the motion. Thank you, thank you, Bob.
There you go.
Okay. So, yeah, it's a long motion, it's, a lot of the wording is chosen very carefully, spent a fair amount of time working on it with staff and Councillor Ferguson. So it could have been rewritten as something like, whereas other municipalities are getting lots of money from regional casinos, whereas we have lots of people and don't get any money from casinos and want some, therefore form a plan with other municipalities to go ask for some.
I like that one, that's a lot better than those three pages here.
But technically move the written version, not the summarization, and it's Councillor Ferguson wants to speak to it first, that's, that's fine with me.
Yeah, thank you, and I appreciate, we, with staff and with Councillor Woodward and myself, it was about the fifth draft.
So it's moved by Woodward, seconded by Ferguson, this for the official, okay?
Yeah, thank you, by, thank you, Mr. Counsel, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I know that it's a very passionate, with myself, I remember some 14, 15 years ago, where a proposed casino was in the works on the, actually on a dock, a council meeting similar to this one, and the opportunity was for the Langleys to have a casino, and we'd already had a gaming palace, which was like a bingo palace in Langley, and gave the city of Langley the opportunity to have something similar to a bingo palace, small casino in, in Langley City, with a hotel attached to it, with a restaurant, and maybe some, a nice, because there's been a performing arts problem in, in the community, with an opportunity for them to have a, a small performing arts theater of, I think, 200 people. I've been there myself, watched a, a number of bands playing there. Anyway, since that time, about eight years ago, at the UBCM, the Chair of Metro Vancouver, Mayor Greg Moore and myself, we co-sponsored a motion before the provincial municipalities at UBCM, and it's that, you know, how is it possible for them to have casinos in, in communities, and have haves and have-not communities, where some communities would get money and others wouldn't? And if, if casinos didn't generate much in the may of money, it wouldn't maybe hit the floor of the UBCM. But what had happened is a, a funding formula was put in place by the governor at the time to give millions of dollars to communities, and other communities wouldn't get it. And I call this the emperor's new clothes, because nobody really knows, I could knock on every single door in Metro Vancouver and say, nobody really knows how much money is generated from the casinos, although lately there's been a, some sort of a police report, but that's not what we're talking about tonight, that we're not, we're not going down that road. What, what we're doing is we're looking at fairness, fairness, fairness in a, in a community. And I really appreciate the time Councillor Woodward and I have spent on this, because it is a passionate thing within not just Langley, because in, in the motion, it mentions district of North Vancouver, city of North Vancouver, Port Coquitlam, city of Port Moody, city of White, city of West Vancouver, and city of, and others, of course, that do not get casino revenues, where surrounding them, communities like, you know, as we know, Richmond, Coquitlam, Burnaby to a lesser degree, Surrey in a lesser degree, Langley City. Now, if somebody was to ask you if to date, the city of Burnaby has received over $150 million of casino revenues, well, people would say, you must be making this up. And the same is Richmond, the same is Coquitlam. Now, they've been doing it for, you know, for 15, 20 years, but a human, they started off making about 10, 20, $10,000 or $20,000 a year, and that's how much it's generated to, to date. And now, and in our report, or in the particular notice of motion, it talks about other communities as well. Where does the casino funds go? How is it distributed? And how is the fairness incorporated? And they could say, well, they voted for it, it's in their community, you know, why are you complaining about it? I'm not really complaining about it, I'm asking for fairness, and I'm saying that things have changed to the degree there, this year, we got something, I know, it gets this last couple of years, called a payroll tax, in which we indeed have to pay for the, the health services, which normally was paid by, by the public. We, we felt that as a community, as a public, you know, elected board or a public elected community, we shouldn't have to pay that, because we're already a municipal body, so we shouldn't have to raise taxes from the, from the homeowners to pay for something that's been downloaded from the province. So if that can change, and other things can change, when certainly, you know, Councillor Woodward, myself, believed that maybe the province should look at the way that casino revenues have been distributed. Fairness, 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 I'm not going to go on in detail, it's very, very passionate. I know there's a lot of work we have to do on this, but it's fair, I believe that we can get other people on board, and who knows, maybe the people at lottery might even put, give us a grant to help us spend some money towards doing this. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, I'd like to also speak to the motion as well, before it's debated. There, there's, spent some time thinking about this, and talking to Councillor Ferguson about some of the history around it and how it has evolved, and to me, that it has evolved since the program was first established and casinos started getting built. We're now, you know, it is to the point where it is simply unfair that township of Langley taxpayers don't receive one dime in casino revenue, while up to $102 million goes to other municipalities. We have a casino less than one kilometer from the township of Langley, with all the downsides thereof. We have five times the population within Greater Langley going to and supporting that casino, and the casinos have evolved into a regional revenue source, used for items like repairing sewers, not the, maybe the original intent, and the system needs to be reformed. Few comments on Facebook, which was good to just get some feedback, some obvious predictable responses, you had your chance, you voted no, too bad for you, build your own, perhaps the shitty should build its own pool, and its own playing fields, and its own ice sheets and dry floor. I didn't vote against the casino, and I get asked every week, ice sheets, concert hall, theaters, more parks. The other council did, another council did say no to council, casino in our community, and we ended up with one anyway. Unlike the city, we don't have the option to say no to rec centers, pools, and ice sheets and dry floors. So I went back and looked at my oath of office when I was preparing for the council meeting on the weekend, after reading some of those comments on social media, and I noticed a phrase, a quote, "I will undertake my duties and responsibilities in such a way as to protect the interests of the township of Langley at all times, not Greater Langley, not the city of Langley, the township of Langley, its taxpayers and small business. And that's what I will do." Casinos have evolved into a municipal revenue source of over $100 million per year, and should be treated as all, for, for all, not just for some, especially with those with a casino less than one kilometer away. Currently, over 500,000 residents in Metro Vancouver and Fraser Valley are not receiving a dime of this money, and that's just simply not fair. Some municipalities receive millions and millions in revenue, while others receive nothing. Example, Richmond, population of 198,000, not that much less than ours, $17 million last year. Coquitlam, population 140,000, 8.6 million. City of Langley, population 26,000, 7.7 million. Township of Langley, Metro Vancouver's sixth-largest municipality, within one kilometer of a regional casino, I'm going to keep saying, a population of 120,000, growth rate of 10% per year, zero dollars, nothing at all. Higher property taxes, fixed income, seniors, small business make up the difference, and that's just not fair. Inequity puts us behind in terms of higher tax rates compared to these other municipalities. Our tax rate competitiveness for small our tax rate competitiveness for small business, providing less to our residents. And this motion really is just to start talking about it with the staff, formulate a plan, see if other municipalities are interested, potentially partner with other municipalities, District of North Vancouver, City of North Vancouver, District of West Vancouver, City of Port Coquitlam, City of Port Moody, City of White Rock, City of Pitt Meadows, representing those five hundred thousand residents that deserve the change and at least a reconsideration of a model that just isn't fair. And that's all the motion is, just to look at it, review a plan for change with others to potentially revise a system that has evolved, needs to be looked at, and to fight for our residents and our municipality. I'm not here to make nice with politicians and other municipalities. I put my residents first and politicians second. We deserve a part of that hundred and two billion. Thanks.
Okay, councillor Richter, you're up.
Yeah, I mean, of course, I was on the council, as was councillor Long, and I think councillor Ferguson, you were here too, when Langley Township was given first crack at having the casino here. And there was such a strong and very loud vocal backlash against Township of Langley having a casino, that we turned it down, and the city stepped in. So, I'm thinking that maybe trying to take it away from the city now is a little punitive towards them, and I'm thinking that it could also be looked as a direct attack on them, and I'm not sure I've got an appetite to go in that direction. I also think we have to be very careful what we wish for, because if we start talking about gaming monies as regional sources of funds, it's quite possible that those regional sources of funds will be siphoned off to Metro Vancouver, and none of the communities will get it then. Now, the communities will benefit, because of course, those funds could be used to offset water, sewer, solid waste, whatever else it is, and regional parks that Metro take care of, and I'm sure Metro would be delighted to have this as a tax source. So, I think before we move forward with this one, I would like to refer to a CPC meeting, where we can have a fuller discussion around the potential implications of this, and whether it's a smart thing to do, or whether it could come back and bite us in the end. So, I would make a referral to CPC.
Okay, can I go through the speakers list first? Thank you, and I guess I have councillor Whitmarsh next.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be helpful to probably go to something like CPC, so we can have a good discussion as a council. I fully understand the intent of the motion, and certainly there's lots of really good points being made, but I, you know, I do think it's, you know, if we do look at the history and the township deciding not to have a casino, but now we realize, oh, there are some benefits, maybe we should jump in and get the benefits from it now. I'm not sure about that. I think it's, the way that it's written, I feel it's also... I'd like to also have some more discussion around what the actual expenses are to the township as a result of the casino being one kilometer away. It does talk in point A about the revenue that is generated from township residents, but I'm not sure what the expenses are that come back to the township as a result of the casino being so close, expenses that might relate to police or other kinds of bylaw officers, or other kinds of things related to that. So, I'm certainly not opposed right now about it, but I think a more healthy, vibrant discussion with council on this would be helpful, and so I would support having it go to a CPC, and I don't think it's a rush item, so I think a CPC would be really helpful.
Thank you. Councillor Davis? Oh, I hit the wrong button, I cleared the queue, look at that. I guess I was, I did that...
Sorry, am I on?
Yes, you will be in a second, yeah. We're gonna have to all push our button. Let's clear the queue and everyone push again, I'm sorry. Well, councillor Davis is gonna be first. All right, all right, there we go.
There we go.
Yeah, you're on.
Maybe I shouldn't ask this question, but did you vote for it, Steve?
No.
Okay. I think there needs to be some clarification. Councillor Richter, I don't think we did have a chance to vote on that.
Thank you.
It was decided before I came on council, I believe. Anyway, that's my recollection.
Okay, anyhow.
We're not gonna put the casino in the middle of Milner Farm.
No, but I'm concerned about opening a can of worms here, because I've seen, there's some sort of tension between the city of Langley and the township, and I don't wanna build on it, but it's always kind of fun, there is tension. And I don't know if we stand there and purr. Like, I've heard councillor Ferguson say, once, if he said it eight times at Budget, that, "We're doing pretty good, we don't even have a casino." And when they show the people, they show all the municipalities, "We actually do pretty good, but we don't have a casino." I think that if we start taking regional funds from casinos, it won't be very long, and we'll be given back, and that's what I'm worried about. I absolutely support this going to a CCP meeting, councillor Whitmarsh. There's a lot of, a lot of stuff here on this motion that worries me. I just, I just wonder if, if, there's a lot of people in the Township of Langley that maybe don't want a casino, and I don't know where you'd put it, anyhow, but, you know, we, I just, this could be a flip side, and down the road ten years, maybe we might wish we'd never put our hand out and tried to get some of this money. Anyhow, just my views. I would support going to CCP.
Councillor Anderson? Well, no, she was ahead of you, I'm sorry, I pushed the wrong button. Councillor Anderson was ahead of you.
Okay, I wish it wasn't so late at night. The usual. I appreciate contrary arguments, I always do. How else could we have a democracy and understand what it is that we're striving to do, make sense of arguments back and forth? And here is my best effort at this time of night to basically counter why this is so unfair, untenable, and inequitable, because I wanna talk about the circumstances of how this came about, which I really honestly don't feel is covered off adequately. Maybe the case we can hear at a CPC meeting about the background. Why is it that the city has a casino and the township did not have one? I think that a lot of what I see in this motion are things that's troubling to me, that if we indeed felt at some point along the way, since basically two thousand and four or five, that there had been some wrong that needed to be mitigated, I don't know why we would not have taken any steps to go forward and say, you know, we may have said no to the casino, but we had lots of reasons why we thought we would be disadvantaged, disadvantaged economically by a casino, and you're not taking that into account. But I have not heard one iota of opinion on the time I've been in council, aside from the fact that policing costs go up, bylaw costs go up, our social costs go up, but I have never heard anybody attribute that to the fact that we have a casino that's right next door to us. So, that's point number one. The next point is that I'm not sure how we would ever, as considered in this motion, try if we could all, could find out, how many patrons from the Township of Langley are going to the casino, and how much money they're spending? I mean, if part of the argument is we're making an economic investment, and we should get a return, I really wouldn't know how to even start to figure out what that number might be. So, the next thing is that I have looked in this short amount of time, and I can find one example in British Columbia of revenue sharing, and that was on Vancouver Island. But that was a far different circumstance that began at the beginning of the process, where a host community, it was decided for reasons of their own, that they would share it with other smaller communities around them. That seems fair to me under the circumstances, where people came together, looked at the business model and said, okay, I think if we are going to be the center, and we have these satellite communities, that it would be fair under the circumstances. The other thing I don't think we've contemplated so far, not to say that we couldn't, the city of Langley actually made a substantial financial investment in the casino. They gave them the land that it's on. I don't know how we could consider at this point the calculation of a business plan that now sits right on top of currently very expensive real estate. So, my final point is, in terms of the advocacy, we have an existing model in which entities have invested years, if not decades, of putting a business plan together in order that there would be an economic return to those who made an investment. And I don't know how in the world you could figure out, without extensive grandfathering, how we could go back into these kind of contractual arrangements, basically, and try and figure out how we could proceed from there? Because the model that was chosen, it may very well be a flawed model, it could be a terrible model, but it's a model that all these businesses were predicated on. So, now we've got a hotel, we have two new restaurants, we have all of these things, and to try and go back fifteen years later and untangle that, and make a determination about what percentage of that the township should get, based on any consideration for costs that we might have, or investments that our citizens may be making, I think is just too problematic. And so, I don't support opening this up. I think if we wanted to look at other creative ways to get some money that would be comparable to what is obviously being generated by casinos, I think it would personally be a better use of our time.
Thank you, and councillor Woodward, you're up now.
Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna be heading in a referral, I can save some of the comments to referral, but I can try to respond to some of these before we entertain what we're gonna do with this. I wanna clarify, the motion is not to go and get a casino and put it in the township, or nor take anyone else's casino away. Some of the comments, it's obviously, that's not what the motion says. It's not going back in time or anything, it actually is looking pretty forward, and looking at it as a region, and a lot of the research was done about it as a region, such as seventeen million going to Richmond, with only about fifty percent more, less than that even, forty percent more people than we have, and they get seventeen million. So, considering it a regional item and a regional revenue source, that we need to get some of, and deserve some of, to provide services to our residents, our taxes will simply be higher. That's great that the city gave the land for the casino deal, but what good does that do if you don't have anybody to go to it? So, I think we all know where all the people are, and they built a casino next to a municipality five times their size, and we don't see any of that revenue, and it's less than one kilometer away. So, I think it is important to start the discussion. I think that's what this is. This is actually just to go to staff for an outline of a potential plan to look at it. Number C is to go and discuss and whether any of these other municipalities are even interested in it, and if they're not, it's not very likely that one municipality can successfully lobby the provincial government. So, we don't really wanna go to CPC, as I said last year, CPC is where good ideas go to die, and that seems to, I'm getting a little bit of that sense here. I would like to get the initial staff report that's outlined from this motion, and see what a potential plan is, and pursue number C to see if other municipalities are interested in joining this effort to relook at this as it has evolved into a regional revenue source. It's not really about Langley City versus Township of Langley, I don't view it that way. You know, the one example though is when the gaming bingo hall closed in Willbrook, and the funds that we were taking from that bingo hall, we were diverting those to the Gateway of Hope. When that closed, the city told us that we're still gonna have to pay the hundred thousand a year to the Gateway of Hope. Their revenue casino, casino revenues went up seven, eight hundred thousand that year, and still didn't offer to make that up. So, this has become a bit of a laugh line in the city, and I don't think it's right, and I think we need to look at regional change for regional benefit. Thank you.
Councillor Ferguson.
Well, first of all, well, democracy is a funny thing, you know. Those of us, councillor Davis, I see, those of us that lived in the community a long time, you know, there used to be a time when it meant something, and those of you that might have lived in the community a while, there's a, I see a reporter in the audience, I think she reported on it, we had a referendum in this community for a pool, and it was one hundred percent passed by the township and one hundred percent passed by the city. And I see some people shaking, yet that's correct, that's a fact. And why spoil a good story with the truth? And the interesting thing, and I'm not sure if Kim, with councillor Richter, or councillor Long, you were in a room, when you were in a room, and somebody from the city came and says, you know that referendum? We're gonna cancel it, we're gonna do our own thing. And they walked away from a bona fide democratic vote after helping us run the pool for quite a few years, and they walked away from that vote. And here we are today talking about this, first of all, the city still owns the land, I think they've got a one dollar or something on it, and they can pull away on any, but why spoil a good story with truth? And, you know, if you guys wanna talk more about facts and figures, please, spend some time with staff, go over line by line entries, go over population for police, population for fire, go over the things that cost money, go over Langley minor hockey, go over Langley baseball, go over Langley soccer, look at how many artificial turf fields we have, and go line by line by line, then walk up to guys like myself that has a his, and says, you know what, Steve, you're wrong, there wasn't a referendum, the city's got all sorts of things, you know, and, you know, we're just gonna leave. We don't necessarily wanna build a casino, we want equity in the region. And yes, that money's not going somewhere else to the region or somewhere else, don't get me wrong. It's a formula, it's the same thing as the formula for the payroll tax. Somebody in Victoria decided on this formula, and somebody in Victoria can do it again, just like downloading, just like, it's a stroke of a pen.
Any business plan, it's simple, you cut me off?
I think the machine cuts you off. No, my apologies.
Okay, anyway, so, thank you very much, that's all I have to say.
Councillor Richter, you gonna speak?
Yeah, I'm gonna move referral to CPC.
I have something to say too, but I guess I'll wait. Okay, before you do that, I mean, I just wanted to point out that on the website here, it talks about the distribution of the gambling revenues, and yes, out of the one point two billion dollars that the province gets, quite a bit of it goes to nonprofit community organizations, and yes, some of it goes to, a considerable amount goes to the hosting community, but there are all kinds of other good things that that money is diverted to, health services and so forth. Eight hundred and twenty-nine million dollars go to general revenue, I guess, or consolidated revenue in the province, so there is a lot of funding going all over.
You know what councillor Moore, Mayor Moore found? He found that there was, it was distribution of some of those monies to casino communities already, throughout their budget.
The double dipping, okay. So, councillor Richter, you're gonna make a motion, go right ahead.
Further discussion with staff.
All right.
And background information.
And that's seconded by councillor Quince. Now, I'm gonna clear the queue, if you don't mind. Why, I'm not sure. Yeah, okay, so now we're speaking to the referral, and everyone gets a fresh kick at it. Councillor Woodward.
No, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna fight the referral too hard, but there's some way within the intent of the referral to salvage item C, councillor Richter, because, again, I would like to see if there's any interest in other municipalities to consider this item with us before that CPC discussion, which is probably gonna be at Christmas now anyway, the way council procedure bylaw is going. So, by Christmas time, hopefully, the staff have some time to at least confirm whether these other municipalities are or are not interested in pursuing this with us, which would help inform the discussion at CPC greatly.
So, you're suggesting...
There's some way to salvage that, rather than just refer...
So, you'd like to move item C and defer the rest of it?
Refer the rest of it to CPC, but staff could maybe start item C to see what the other municipalities are... Maybe mister Backen can help us on some of the wording around that initiative.
Another tricky deal here.
I think it would something be an amendment of items, an amendment that item C precedes and that the rest be referred to the CPC meeting.
Well, except, hang on a second. Item C says contact and coordinate, a combined effort. I can see reaching out to them and seeing if they're interested, but part of what I think we should be talking about in CPC is what's the cost of this gonna be, and who's gonna spearhead it? And as we're starting it, we're probably the ones that are gonna have to spearhead it. But I could see you taking C out, as long as the intent of C is just to reach out to see if preliminary there's any interest.
If there is... If there isn't, I don't believe that one municipality will be successful. So we may as well find out if anyone's interested to inform that discussion.
Okay.
All right, to do this correctly, we need an amendment to do that.
I'll move that amendment.
And it's been moved by Council Woodward and seconded by?
Alson.
Council Richter. So now on the amendment, which is to proceed in some respect on C and refer the rest to CPC meeting, I'll call the amendment button, I think. All right, so now we're on the amendment. Anyone wish to speak to the amendment? Council Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I guess just maybe the wording just can be changed just slightly in C so that it is maybe contact and determine interest, or something like that, as opposed to, the way it's written here is that's actually coordinating a combined effort. It seems to be a bit early until we've had CPC, but maybe it could just be rephrased to say contact and determine interest level.
But it says potentially in there, and I guess you might want to take the words and coordinate out, but to say contact them.
I think potentially was added there very deliberately to give that flexibility, Council Whitmarsh.
Okay, so staff would be able to work that out? Okay, I think we're getting nods from staff, so okay there. Anything else on the amendment?
What exactly are we...
The amendment is that to proceed with C and refer the rest to CPC meeting. And C has been amended, modified somewhat to, has just been discussed, that it's going to take out the words coordinate and emphasize potential, potentially.
Okay, so in C, we're deleting and coordinate.
Okay.
So contact regional municipalities to potentially coordinate, to determine interest in potentially coordinating?
Okay, to determine interest. All right. Do you have that, Ms. Bauer? Okay. Council Davis on the amendment?
Oh, no, that's, I just wanted to clarify the...
Okay, any more discussion on the amendment? Open amendment, I think, is that right? We'll call the vote. Wait a minute, I pushed a button. On the amendment. Okay, this is only on the amendment. Just a moment, please. What number we got here? This is M2. M2, okay, go for the vote. Council Kuntz. Okay, everyone's, opposed is Council Davis and Council Woodward on the...
I'm not opposed.
Arnesson.
Woodward's in favor.
Oh, it's the way, okay, I'm sorry. Council Arnesson and Council Davis are opposed to the amendment. So now the motion as amended, which is to refer this to CPC and to proceed with C. Any more discussion?
C is amended.
That's correct.
Yeah.
All right, so any discussion on that? No, we're going to call the vote. Okay, and that passes with Council Long and Arnesson opposed. Right? Okay. Well, I didn't say that, but I'll tell you later.
You just don't like CPC.
You don't want to go to CPC, Bob?
Oh, I love CPC. Okay, now we're at, we're almost at the end of the meeting. People are leaving already, so we have other business. Is there?
Yes.
Any other business? Council Richter.
Okay, in the June 20 package, item number six on page 23 refers to a letter that was sent to us by a school child in Alder Grove and her parents with regards to the safety of the intersection at 272nd Street and 28th Avenue, and how the lack of safety at that intersection prohibits children really from crossing the street to get to both Short Read Community School and Betty Gilbert Middle School. Then on June 12, staff indicated by memo that the TAC guidelines do not warrant a traffic light at this intersection. Now, I could put a motion forward on this, or can we just refer it to staff? What I would like staff to do is to check with the school principal and teachers as to whether additional safety measures are warranted in this, in their opinion, at this intersection.
I'll second that, if you need a referral.
Well, just a moment, because I have an opinion on this, too. So staff report already did say that there wasn't warranted.
No, but I'm asking, when you have a child write to us and say she can't walk to school because her parents won't let her, they're scared of that intersection, there's something wrong. She should be able to walk to school.
And there is history to this, so maybe I could ask a question of staff. The recommendation is not to put an activated red light in, but would I get an idea of the approximate cost to do that? And perhaps staff...
No, what I want to do, I'm asking, I want somebody to go and talk to the teachers and the principals at those schools to find out if they're in agreement that additional safety measures are needed at that intersection for the kids that go to their schools.
There's a motion on the table.
There is not a motion on the table, because I haven't seconded or acknowledged you. So just stand by, because I wouldn't mind knowing what the cost is to put a light, and why don't we just make a motion to put a light in there, if that's, if that's what's happening. Stand by, Council Ferguson. Can we get an idea, what is the cost approximately to put a red light activated in there? Right now, it's an orange light, and there's no button.
A full signalization, Mr. Chair, would cost between $250,000 to $300,000. That's a full signalization.
What about just an activated red light?
Those could be anywhere around $100,000, depending on how far the electrical system needs to come from.
I think there's power there already, because there's the little lights that run across the road. Okay, so, thank you, thank you, Mr. Seifi. So what is exactly the motion that you're trying to make, Council Richter? My apologies.
I would like to refer item six, page 23, from June 20 of 19, item distributed, to staff with the request that staff contact the school staff at both Betty Gilbert and Short Read Community to determine if the staff feel that there are additional safety precautions needed at that intersection in order to get the children that go to those two schools safely to school.
Okay, and that's been seconded by Council Ferguson, if you can repeat that word for word. But from, by memory.
Yes, I'll move. Question.
So the motion, to be simplified, is that staff contact the two schools and ask for their concerns on this intersection, right?
It's not their concerns, to ask their opinion. Do they feel that more safe, other measures are needed?
Be put in place. Maybe they'll put a crossing guard there. Maybe they have to volunteer.
Yeah, well, I don't think they'll put a crossing guard there, but they may say they need an interest or a...
They're doing this on purpose, because I'm chairing, right? I mean, we don't really know what we're doing here, do we? Okay, so, Mr. Backen, do you have an idea of what we're asking?
I think I understand the question. I'm just thinking we perhaps should go to the school district and have them contact the schools.
Yeah.
Because it is government to government.
Yeah. And we had a member of the school board, and she just left. You could have asked her.
That's fine.
Okay, so that staff contact the school district about this intersection. Seconded by Council Ferguson. Any discussion? Okay, we'll call the vote. What are we going to call this one? M4?
17.
I'm going to call it four. That passes with no objections.
There it goes.
It's probably the wrong number, but you can fix that. All right, any other new business?
Turn it off!
Okay, seconded. You have new business? Oh, I don't know any about that. I asked if there's, oh, excuse me, stop, everybody. No, no, no. My apologies, please, please take your seats. It hasn't been called.
Say it once.
Yeah, but you shouldn't have said it, because there was, someone pushed a button. Council Whitmarsh has the floor.
Yeah, thank you. In our, in our package today, on June 24, item number 13, we had a, a letter today, to us today from a Mr. Audi regarding Fort Langley. And I'd be interested just if we could have this referred to staff. I'd just like to have an update on, on this letter and a response, just so we have more information, because all we have is the information that's presented here from Mr. Audi.
Okay, so this is item 13 in today's agenda. Do we need a motion for that? Probably do, so it's moved by council.
Do you need a motion? I'll defer conference to step up.
All right, okay.
Do you need a motion?
Well, I hear a motion.
I'd like to get more information, so I'd like to make a motion for more information from staff.
All right, stand by, Rob. Thank you. All right.
Any more new business after this? Or can I go?
We'll see.
Yeah, I'll wait, Council Long.
Yeah, we'll let you know. Thanks, Council Woodward. Okay, so we're discussing item 13 in the distribution package. Council Woodward has declared a conflict because it goes about his properties, and it's been moved by Council Whitmarsh and seconded by Council Kuntz. And discussion on the referral for staff report, is that what you have?
Yeah, I'm, just a staff report. There's lots of information here that's provided by Mr. Audi, but I don't know, this is the first I've seen it, so I don't know details or information or that. It would be helpful, the letter was addressed to staff as well as to mayor and council, so it would be helpful to have maybe an update from staff, a report, just so we have some clarification on what's actually happening here.
Okay. Thank you, Council Whitmarsh. And Council Richter?
Yeah, I'm wondering if this has to do with the report that went to the Heritage Committee, that the Heritage Committee supported, and was, the Heritage Advisory Committee received and endorsed the recommendations from the Heritage Review Panel for the state wood properties, and that carried. So if this has to do with that matter, I'm not sure we should be reopening it. It's been dealt with by one of our...
Well, okay, the Heritage Review Panel...
And we accepted these minutes today.
Yeah, maybe Mr. Seifi could speak to this, if he don't want me to, but I mean, the Heritage Review Panel looked at the application and made some recommendations that were endorsed, but I think this, this letter goes a lot into other things. Mr. Seifi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The facts are as follows. There's an application for a heritage alteration permit, which is required because of the application to demolish a building or series of buildings. And typically, a demolition application is accompanied by a redevelopment of other buildings. In this particular case, the application is only for demolition with the intent, in the short term, to not replace those buildings, if they were to be approved by council, to be demolished, to be replaced with something else. Those applications, because of their heritage implications, are typically referred to the Heritage Advisory Committee, which dealt with the matter through their Heritage Review Panel, and council did indeed receive the minutes of the committee this evening. And the communication from Mr. Audi refers to the application as well as the implications of it. And what staff can tell you is that the application will at some point be brought forward to council, complete with analysis, implications, input from the community, if any, input from the committee, all of the above. And it's expected currently before the summer break, pending details.
Okay, but the motion that we're entertaining now is to get a report on this letter, because there's lots of information in it. And I think the answer to your question has been given, Council Richter, that that's the, the history of the, of the process thus far. It went to the Heritage Committee, and that was it. So it's still, it's still an application in process. So it's a legitimate motion still, Mr. Backen? We're still okay with that?
A legitimate motion to have Mr. Seifi put in writing what he just advised council.
Okay, any more discussion?
The only report we're going to get is what he just said.
Seifi?
Well, we haven't had a chance to analyze this letter. I mean, we just got it. So I'm sure that maybe that is it. Who knows? We can't, if we're going to know what the report is before we've got it, then that's kind of odd, so...
No, but I guess what my concern is, is it's time for Fort Langley to heal, and we can't let this scabpicking continue on. Like, if it's coming to council through legitimate council mechanisms, which it did through our Heritage Advisory Committee, and which it will when it comes as application, we should deal with it there. My thoughts.
All right, any more discussion? Would you like to just vote?
Well, hold it, other than the fact that it's very, very, very confusing.
Excuse me, if you'd like to speak, you have to, you have to ask to be...
Well, I know, you'll turn my mic off.
Okay, no, I just turned you on now.
The thing is, you know, it's very, very confusing. You know, I don't, I've read it, I understand the concern, I understand the concern to some of the citizens, I mean, but, you know, where do we, where do we go other than back to the committee or hear from the staff as they heard right now? I just, I don't, I don't know. And I wish I had an answer, but I don't know if staff's going to have an answer, right, other than working it through the legitimate means through the, our committees? If we want to refer this back to the, do we want to do that, Council Woodward? Refer it to our, to our committee? I mean, that's what we have committees for.
No, excuse me, the committee review panel looked at the specifics of the application. It didn't look at anything that's in this letter necessarily.
So can we send a letter to the committee?
Well, we have a motion on the floor right now to refer this letter to staff for a report. Isn't that right?
That, that's...
That's what's been moved and seconded. Yep, so that's what we're debating.
We can't, how about an amendment to refer it to the committee, Heritage Advisory Committee?
They're not going to be able to help you, I don't think. Council Whitmarsh, you have the mic.
Yeah, I guess I'm, you know, the, the report that Mr. Seifi has provided is a, is a helpful verbal, but I, I think it would be helpful to have it written on what, just a response to this, you know, all, I don't, I'm not, I don't have any position on it either way. I just have a letter here that I don't know much about, so I just would like to have some input from staff on what's happening, and if we're moving along in process, that's great. There's, there's no position that I'm holding on this. I just simply want to have information so we can make good decisions, that's all.
Thank you. Council Arnesson?
Thank you, worship. In the interest of trying not to stir the pot too much, but the reality for me is that we have advisory committees that can give us a recommendation, but they're not binding on council. It's up to our discretion to make a determination about what we think is correct. So they have looked at a set of facts, and they have made a determination and made recommendations. But to me, it's really important that we potentially discuss other things having to do with it. I've not had the time to really digest what is in the written correspondence, but I would say is I think it's important for us to discuss with staff what the ramifications of this could be, because this is something, as far as I'm concerned, is totally unprecedented. So I think we should be clear that we have a good understanding of as many of the different things that we can ask about the context, what would that look like, economics, redevelopment, you name it. I think we should be able to have a fulsome opportunity to discuss that with staff, because that's why they're here, to inform us about these unique situations, I believe.
Okay, we've had lots of discussion. I'm going to call the vote.
One last one.
I'm going to call the vote. I guess I'm not going to call the vote. Okay, this is your second opportunity.
You know, I appreciate what Council Arnesson said, you know, that, I mean, I'm going to be supporting this now, because I appreciate, now, if we need more information, do we need a wider report? Or is it, you're sufficient with the report that's being asked for?